Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you Mr. Mayor. Councilman Fasenelli?
She's here, she's one of her colleagues.
She's just taking a brief break.
Uh, Councilman Mills?
Here.
Councilwoman Polly?
This doesn't feel like a normal meeting of the council, but I'm here.
Sure doesn't.
Mayor Protim Barnett?
Present.
Marys?
Here, thank you very much. Uh, today I'd like to ask Andy Mills to lead us in the pledge, real quick.
We have our missing member too. He took the roll while you were gone.
Plead is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Andy.
Where is he?
Um, okay, tonight I'd like to ask the foundation to come up, uh, the Community Services Foundation, to introduce the band. It's Andy.
Uh, this is just a small part of the Sarah Villa instrumental music program.
People have a microphone.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, this is a very small part of the Villa, Sarah Villa instrumental music program. This is Ms. Diane Hannah, she is the conductor, she teaches all these children, she has a beginning band, an advanced band, and an orchestra. Uh, she has one of the largest music programs in all of Orange Unified. Uh, it used to be the kids would learn how to do music in elementary school, in fifth and sixth grade. They no longer have that because of the cuts at Orange Unified. So she has to teach these kids what an instrument is, rhythm, this is a note, what does this note do? And then they learn to play together. And she did apply for a grant because sometimes the instruments become mangled or broken. And on behalf of the Villa Park Community Services Foundation, we are happy to award her and her band a small check for $2,500 to be used for repair of the many instruments that her students use. And in gratitude, they would like to come forth and share a little bit of their musical expertise. Thank you.
I love these suspenders and belts here.
Yeah. All right. They're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, very, very good guys.
What a great way to start a council meeting.
Thanks guys, that's the most fun I've had since I've been on this council.
That was a definite treat, no question about it.
These, uh, this group here is considered the advanced band at Sarah Villa. At Sarah Villa. And they marched in our boat parade along with the marching band with the high school.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Uh, because of that, so.
Wow, that's cool.
So this was, at least people can see where the money goes back.
Yeah.
And that's important.
They're very talented.
So, they worked hard.
Definitely. All right, moving right along. At this time, I'd like to ask all those in the audience to please silence your cellphones if possible, or turn them off. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcomes you to this meeting, we encourage your participation. If you wish to speak on an item contained on the agenda, please approach a podium at the time the item is being considered. Um, after, I recognize you, state your name and address for the record prior to providing your comments. Speakers will be limited to a time period of three minutes in most cases. If you wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please do so during the period listed for oral communications. Um, next, I'd like to invite up the Orange County Fire Authority to give us a report, please. Welcome Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Ron Roberts, I'm one of your newly assigned Battalion Three Chiefs. It's a pleasure to be here and, if you will, meet you all. As far as the Orange County Fire Authority goes by calls for service over the last few weeks, uh, since the first of December, as expected, most of our calls have been for medical aids. We've been lucky, there have been no structure fires, no property loss in the city over this time period. I would also like to update and, uh, bring to your attention, on December 7th, your firefighters from Station 23 had the privilege of delivering a special guest, uh, driving Santa around, although it was wet, I understand it was a fun time to be had by all. Uh, on December 8th, it was just mentioned, uh, your firefighters also participated in the boat parade. I'd like to remind the viewing audience and the audience present, uh, this is the holiday time, please be careful with, uh, Christmas trees, and it seems like we've been having a little bit of a run on chimney fires in adjacent cities, so we'd ask, just be careful. If you have any questions, uh, or need information, that can be found on our website at ocfa.org. And, uh, that's all I have, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much for your participation, uh, hauling Santa around town and, uh, in the boat parade as well, we really appreciate it. Any questions for the chief guys? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, finally, a monthly update from Lieutenant Gunzel.
Thank you Mayor, City Council, uh, for our Part One crime update for the month of November. We had eight total Part One crimes. Broken down, there's two, what they consider residential burglaries. Uh, one, the, the person removed a window pane and a screen, the house alarm went off, but no one made entry and there was no loss on that one, uh, still considered a burglary. The other one, uh, a, uh, person reported cash missing from the purse, the homeowner stayed, the house was locked, uh, as were the doors and windows, no signs of forced entry. Still, uh, uh, took a burglary report on that one. Two vehicle burglaries, um, one where they took tools and sunglasses, et cetera, uh, they think they used a slim jim because there was no, uh, damage or signs of entry on that vehicle. And also was, the second one was a window smash with lots of tools. Uh, one petty theft incident from an unlocked vehicle, losses of wallet, cash, credit cards, uh, and insurance paperwork. Please, uh, just remember to lock your cars, that, uh, stuff like that may not happen. And three acts of vandalism. Um, that is it for this month. Uh, I also want to report that, report that, uh, we did participate in the, in the annual boat parade, we had, uh, 12 reserves and 20 explorers on for that night. Um, for all accounts, it was highly successful, and then also last week, we held a identity theft presentation in the chambers here, uh, given by, uh, our fraud Sergeant, Sergeant Scott's bawling, that was pretty well attended, so. Any questions for me?
I've got one. How many did we solve this month?
Uh, we haven't solved any crimes this month for the Part One crimes, so that is sad to report.
I have a question about any, any new traffic, uh, that we have to have in town, as far as, uh, Leve Center and, uh, Villa Park Road.
Right.
Get some extra diligence on them.
Well, yeah, I was hoping that that would, that would get noticed right away, uh, I believe the, the day after our meeting, um, we sent deputies out to the intersection, and I know Deputy Rollins cited several vehicles, um, with the direction of strict enforcement. Right now Rollins is on vacation, as he said, he was here for two days and then went on vacation, so I have a mix of people, so every morning at six o'clock, I'm briefing, reminding people to, uh, go out there and, but the deputies who work the overtime generally unless their Villa Park deputies aren't trained in radar and things like that, they can certainly do red light tickets and stop sign tickets, but, uh, yeah, there's been an increase in citations in the city.
For the benefit of the residents out there watching, we have been receiving a lot of complaints from the residents for speeding within the city, uh, crossing red lights, not stopping at stop signs, and it's been from all over Villa Park, not just one particular area, but both stoplights at Villa Park Road and Center, as well as in Wanda, you're getting not one car, two cars, you're getting three cars that are going through there. So we actually asked for another CDC meeting, which was noticed, and met with the sheriff on that issue, because we needed to slow traffic down all over the place. In addition, one of the other items, I just want to make sure that we address, is that I had received a phone call from a resident asking about alarms going off in the city of Villa Park. And when you go to the sheriff's blotter, you're going to notice a lot of alarms that are going out. And his question was, are these false alarms, or are these people actually trying to break in? The majority of them were false alarms going in, and that was something we wanted to make sure that we discussed with the sheriff, because when you see 20 calls there, you're very concerned. Um, and most of them are false alarms, which we do, now I, I am, have been educated, do have a false alarm policy within the city. And, and that is something that the sheriff does enforce after, I think, three?
The third one.
After the third one. Mm-hmm.
Lieutenant Gunzel, I just really want to thank you for your participation with the city events. Bri, uh, Deputy Brian did a great job leading Santa around in the fire engine, and, uh, on Sunday, the boat parade, absolutely amazing at all the manpower that you gather to come help our city. Uh, so many volunteers and reservists, uh, and full-time guys that you provide, and we just can't thank you enough, we couldn't do it without you, I mean, you guys are just everywhere, and every intersection is just covered so well, and, um, just absolutely an awesome job, my hat's off to you.
Okay, it's our pleasure, and that, that is one event that, that fills up rather quickly, because guys, as you know, it's the same people every year, they love doing it, so that's no problem.
We appreciate it.
I do have one more question. How many, how many staff did the Sheriff's Department have there? Because I made that same observation.
A lot.
You know, I told the mayor, because we were, we were, I said, this is unbelievable, they're, they're just all over here, and he commented, yeah, and they're doing it gratuitously for the event.
We had, we had 12 reserves and wasn't enough vehicles for them to be in, because I don't have 12 extra patrol cars, so I had one with me and one in the various vehicles. And then the explorers at every post, every intersection. I did have two patrol deputies that I requested to come and close down Villa Park Road and Center. Um, I didn't want explorers doing that, high school kids essentially, and, and I really wasn't comfortable having the reserves do it, I, I think they're, they're served better than other locations, so I wanted deputy sheriffs with patrol cars out there. So I did call in two people to do that, they were working the areas, surrounding areas, they came in for an hour, closed down the intersection, then went back on their way, so.
So how many total bodies did we have out there? It was a lot, it seemed like.
Uh, I, I don't know, it, it was probably in the area of 25, somewhere.
Yeah, I'm thinking 30, 35.
But the bike patrol guys, that, that's, the, the people on bikes, they really make this happen, because they, they go back and forth, and they're kind of hard to, to track, because there's only, I think there was eight of those guys, and they're all over the place, so.
How long did they close, how long do we, we close Cattella that whole time while it, or those are right?
Till the parade came all the way through, right, from the, from the start all the way till I came through, in the back, yes.
That must jam it all the way to the freeway on ramp.
There's a lot of people making U-turns, uh, the benefit of doing it right there is people can make U-turns at Ray Deck, and people can turn on Lemon, and what have you, just get out of it. But there, there were people in the front of the line that just shut up their cars and waited, so, yeah.
Since you bring that up, I, I think a couple of years ago, we changed our start location down to Fitchin Ranch, so we're only closing it off once instead of twice, and that was a real, that was very wise, uh, for us. But I too just am so appreciative of the Sheriff's Department and all the reservists, I have a great time with them, they have a great spirit, and they've kept our, everybody safe, and we have a lot of people that come into the city all along that route, lots of home parties with guests and family that comes in, so it's, it's not just for fun, it's really essential that we have you there, and we're appreciative that you keep our, our residents and their, uh, guests safe during such a, an uplifting event in the city.
That's our pleasure.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we move to the time for oral communications on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the City Council. If you wish to address the City Council, please step to the podium and state your name and address. Oral communications will be limited to three minutes for individual speakers. It looks like we have a speaker already, welcome.
Good evening Councilmen, my name is Rosalind Gray, my address is 17846 Helena Circle in Villa Park. I'm here to, I guess, to request some information, I have noticed that the Fitchin Park Ranch closures over to Wanda have taken place. And I, as a resident of that area, am concerned as to what the first responders will do now that you can't walk through, and if there's an evacuation plan in place that the residents can have to educate their families.
Jared, why don't you respond?
Uh, yes, the, the closures, um, occurred last week, the wrought iron fence was, was voted on, uh, at the last couple of City Council meetings, and, and it was installed. As for first responders, um, they, they will respond as, as normal, as, as they typically has in, in the past, they'll just drive down Villa, or what is that, Fitchin Ranch Road, onto the three small cul-de-sacs, um, so, uh, maybe I don't follow?
Well, I, my concern is, if you have blocked off the walk-throughs, when I bought the property, the, the original owner told me that the way to get out, if there was a disaster, a fire, that if, uh, the option not to drive out, I could of course walk out through those openings. However, now that they are ironed up, it's not possible to do, so if I just see that, uh, when you try to get out of there, even when there's school clo, you know, school's out, you have people lined up, they can't get out, I'm wondering, will the first responders be able to get in, in a timely manner? And if we have to get out, can we get out? How, what's in place to, to help us evacuate the area if it need be?
I have evidence that they're pretty easily to kick over.
Oh, really?
Part of the fence that we just installed was kicked, and I, I'd imagine it was kicked, um, I don't know how, how it happened, but this is part of our new fence.
Ah.
So we are already being vandalized in the area.
One week. One week.
One week. Probably simply walked through that. I know, I know that's not adequate enough, but there, there, in the event of an emergency, we'll be able to funnel you out, I, I have no doubt about that. Uh, anybody can drive a truck right through that, if, you know, if need be, if the fire department has to get in, the fire department will get in. Uh, the street's been, in, in, in the last 40 years, I don't think anybody's ever driven through those access points, um...
Yeah, but you could always walk out, if you needed to, or stretchers could be, you know, brought in.
There is a gate at the south end that we can open up, uh, you know, in time of emergency, if we need to walk out there. Uh, I'm, I'm fairly confident we'll be able to, to herd everybody out of that area.
Well, that's a big concern, and I just wanted to know if the City Council had taken that into consideration, if there is an evacuation plan, or some piece of education you can distribute to the residents, so they can educate their families what to do, because everybody in a state of fire is going to be panicking. So we need to have something in place, or I feel I need to have something in place for my family, so they know what to do. So, uh, that's a concern for me, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the City Council, and if that's been considered and taken care of, then may I have my copy?
I have a, I have a question here.
Go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but all we did was close, oh, I'm sorry.
I hate this thing, I always push it out of the way. You know, my recollection was that all we did was to block a couple of, of passages in the fence, but that's clear out on this, you know, on the street area, out in the green belt, and it's wide open on the right side, I mean, did we fence, did we literally fence somebody in? Because this is kind of catching me by surprise. My recollection is, you can walk out into the green grass area and just head out to the right, and it's wide open, am I missing something?
You live on Helena?
Yes.
Yeah, she's pretty much fenced in.
Oh, Hel, oh Helena.
She's on Helena, and Helena is at the end.
And the only way to walk out of there the way it is now, is to walk way up to Lincoln.
That's correct.
So consequently, uh, I am becoming physically challenged, and so how am I going to get out? I'm, I'm, it's, that's my concern. So if there's a plan, I'm not objecting, I just need to know that I'm safe and can get out. I'm having nightmares about this, physically. You know, if you have fire engines on Fitchin Ranch, and people in their cars trying to get out, and, you know, I'm hobbling along maybe with a cane, and there are a couple of people on the street who are in wheelchairs, how are these people going to get out? Before, we were able to, within a block or so, able to get out through those walk-throughs over into the orange side, over to Wanda, over to Collins. Now that is not possible, so.
Ms. Gray, I have a question, Ms. Gray, um, if we opened, the, the one was not permanent, it was more like gated, but locked, if that end down toward Collins was open, would that be more, um, comforting to you?
Well, it certainly would be more comforting, I don't know if it, uh, uh, deflates the purpose there, but I was just wondering when I saw that happen, I'm going like, I'm fenced in here, this doesn't feel good. So, um, I just wanted to know, if, if there isn't a plan, we need one. And, uh, yes, I would like to be able to go out, but it's all ironed up, the guys came home and told me, Mom, we can't get in, we're just, you know, we, we have to go way down to, to Lincoln to get in and out, and they catch the bus every morning.
I see.
And so they're off at Lincoln and walking down, because they can't get in or out, and my major concern is, if there is a disaster, how will we get out?
I have another question for you then, because this was discussed extensively for several months, and I know that staff sent a questionnaire to every single home.
Yes, they did, yes.
Uh, did you respond to that?
Yes, the neighbor next, uh, door came by, and he said, we're going to close up some of these to keep people from coming into the community. I said, well, you know, something has to be open on this end, so if something's going to be open on this end, I, it's okay, but I don't want everything closed up where I'm boxed in. And so I agreed to some extent, but then I come home and wow, you've ironed me up, I just don't feel very comfortable about that at all, so.
If you make it even to the fence, aren't you clear of structures and out in the grass and, and out in the open? I mean, there's nothing, if you make it to the fence, I mean, there's nothing around that it's going to burr or fall on you or anything, is it? Aren't you clear?
Well, if you have, if you have fires, say for example, in the end house, for example, and I managed to get to the grassy area, you know, you've got smoke going on as well as fire, so how am I going to get out? I have to go all the way up to, the way it is now, I have to go all the way up to Lincoln to get out, because I'm certainly not going to propel over a, a brick wall.
No, but if you even make it to the fence, I think you're clear of any fire danger from those buildings, unless I'm mistaken.
No, no, you're right, you know, what we'll do is, I'll go down there, uh, with Lieutenant Gunzel, and maybe the on-duty OCFA agent will take a look at, and see if it's adequate enough. If there's any danger, we'll address it, if there's no danger pursuant to their professional opinion.
But I believe we take the City Council action, and, and that's what we know at the Council.
But I think, I think our point, I agree, I agree.
And, and I believe that, uh, the gentleman, there's two gentlemen that did the survey that came by, that were talking about this to you, that said they were going to close it down, but who, who was that gentleman, if I could ask?
Uh, the one that I spoke to was Eric.
Eric.
Mr. Reynolds, I believe he circulated.
I did the petition.
And I, you know, as I said, if there was going to be my, I talked to him, and I said, if one of these down here is going to be open, or there's a way for us to get out, I'm, I'm, it's okay. But it's all, all ironed up now, so.
Well, he, you know, many people came in and they talked about that to us, and it, and it carried on our council that we close all of the apertures on that fence.
I would not have voted for that, and, is there something in place? Did, was it studied, I mean, are, I'm thinking first responders, they, they certainly have a time of what they could do, uh, before and after, I'm sure that study was done, so comfort me and let me know that the time is equal.
Yeah.
But, but did you respond to the official city questionnaire in, in addition to?
No.
Because cards were mailed to everyone, okay. I think it's important for us to take this input, this is not the only input, I also received an email today that I responded to, and I drove down there and just happened to run into residents, so I think that we might have to, um, take all of this input and perhaps adjust our original action, but I think that might have.
Well, it's a good idea, Jared, to do what you had mentioned, and this is a brand-new thing, so we're going to be evaluating this, now we'll go down and we'll kind of study it. Of course, emergency vehicles, none of them go through those gates, they all come down the street, and the street is still wide open, as Mayor Protim Barnett said, there is a lot of grass area, I mean, I really don't view it as a hazard per se, there's a lot of area down there where you could walk out and walk down the street a little bit, rather than walk out onto, uh, Wanda, uh, but we will study it, it is new, and if issues come up, we'll adjust, make changes and adjust.
I think two, two ways there, it would not be wide enough if there is an emergency and people are panicking. However, you said it's a way to get out of there, may I speak with you after the meeting? Because I know my three minutes is up, so I can get out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. All right, do we have any other speakers? Looks like we do.
Yes, you do. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Gwen Norton Perry, and I'm the Executive Director for the Orange County Council of Governments, and I also want to say, I applaud you for the job that you're doing, I was the founding mayor for the city of Chino Hills, and served in that capacity for 21 years, I just recently stepped down, so I laud the efforts that you put forth, I know it's not an easy task always, so I thank you for that. What I wanted to do is just give you a little bit, a, a brief background about OCAG, we've made some significant changes, um, in the last year or so, and just kind of wanted to brief you, if I might, for the next couple of minutes on that. Uh, as you know, OCAG is a council of governments for Orange County, uh, it is comprised of all the individuals that represent the Orange County cities. On SCAG, you are represented by John Nielsen, our board is comprised of 20 members, those being the Regional Council members of SCAG, plus eight other, uh, agencies that are representative of Orange County. We also have eight ex-officio members who are non-voting members of our organization. Like the city of Villa Park, we're a very lean and mean organization, uh, the board voted about a year and a half ago to bifurcate from OCTA, who is actually managing the organization for that period of time, for a variety of reasons, number one, they wanted their independence. Part of that equation was to bring on an executive director, they had a recruitment for it, and, uh, they chose me to serve in that capacity. It's not a full-time job, I'm consultant, I also do consulting for the city of Laguna Woods, so I understand small cities and the nuances that are associated with them as well. Again, we're a very lean and mean organization, our operating budget for this fiscal year is approximately 250,000, much less than it was in the past, because OCTA had heavily burdened rates for their staff, so... So we've really reduced that, uh, significantly, excuse me. Um, again, uh, as a result of the board action about a year and a half ago, July one of this year would, would, was the date where OCTA and OCAG would, would bifurcate. As a result of that, we are now an independent agency. We do have an agreement with OCTA for the use of their facilities for board meetings. But part of that agreement also meant that we had to take on our own treasury and bookkeeping, so I hired another consultant who's handling that. The city of Garden Grove graciously, um, agreed to handle our clerk services, which can be very burdensome, as you know about clerk services. We understand what that is and has done it free of charge. But it's been very significant, uh, this past year, what we've done. As you may recall, in twenty twelve, the last RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan, that was around the time the SB three seventy-five passed, reduced greenhouse gas emissions. Orange County, along with one other cog, chose to assume, uh, their own sub-regional delegation to address those issues in there. By doing so, we ended up securing approximately a two million dollar grant to do so. That sustainability community strategy was approved and accepted in totality by SCAG. And as a result of that, all of our numbers, all of our data, all of our land use and growth projections were preserved here in Orange County. We are now coming up to the twenty sixteen RTP. And once again, that debate is going on whether or not we wanted to assume that again. Our board took action at our last meeting to not assume sub-regional delegation for a variety of issues. Uh, this, this, the, probably the most prominent one is that A-BAG in Northern California and Sandag in San Diego County were both sued on their sustainable community strategy by a variety of conservation groups, Zero Club and the like. We did not want to assume that type of litigation. And secondly, under this go-around, our local data and local members cannot be protected. Uh, we anticipate that California Air Resources Board may even double the greenhouse gas emission targets this year.
Wow.
So it's very significant. So we have now chosen to put the burden on SCAG for them to actually handle that for us. So now it, obviously the burden is on me. I attend so many, I'm in LA almost all the time. It seems like I just came back from Paramount with another organization similar to mine as well. So we will be monitoring to ensure that Orange County's interests are protected through SCAG as we have been. But even more so now, that's extremely important to do so. So just wanted to let you know about that one. Um, our goals, you know, for the, for the coming year, again, obviously extensive, you know, participation and monitoring of SCAG of, of what's going on. Since we did not assume sub-regional delegation, we have approximately one point four million dollars left in a federal grant that right now we're developing a plan to provide grants to our member agencies. As you know, we, uh, all the cities in Orange County is members with the exception, unfortunate, of Villa Park, who's not a member agency. So we're looking at doing that. I just met with, um, Gateway Cities Council of Governments this afternoon and we're looking at, at combining grant opportunities and looking for other grants that we can do on a larger region and hopefully provide that to our Orange County member agencies as well. I was also appointed, uh, along with one of the members of OCTA, excuse me, to serve on the oversight panel for SCA QMD's, um, AQMP. So they're coming up now with that, that update on that one. So again, air quality issues are just very important to Orange County. We want to preserve that for, uh, for the Orange County as well. So again, I'm just here tonight just to give you a little bit of background about OCAG, about what we're doing. And, uh, certainly, obviously, the, the question would be, we would love to have you, um, as a member of agencies. Our dues were not increased again this year. We are very conservative in what we're doing. You have, you would have the lowest dues in the county, next to Laguna Woods, actually, too. So, uh, we would love to have you as a member. I think it's important now, even more so than in the past, to really ensure that we have full support of all of the Orange County cities, to ensure that we have a united voice and that Orange County's interests are represented, not those of the outlined jurisdictions in LA County. So I thank you so much for the time, the opportunity to present to you this evening. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I would look forward possibly in the future to having you become a member of our organization.
Thank you for the information.
Happy holidays.
Okay, any other oral communications tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, we'll move to public hearings. Our first hearing is to consider a variance permit request at nine four three one Villa Isle Drive. Jennifer, do you have a report, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'm the city council. Tonight we have for your request by the applicant for, uh, reducing the front yard setback for a fence, um, that would go in their front yard about three feet from the property line. The fence would allow vehicle access through a vehicle gate and, um, pedestrian access through, um, man gate. And we have a presentation for you. We're just getting it up on the screen, so bear with me. Um, this is going to seem very similar to an application that we saw a couple of months ago, uh, where the residents were asking for a fence to be rather than twenty feet setback from that front property line, much closer to the street. Uh, this property, as you can see in the slide behind you, is at the end of a cul-de-sac. And it is an unusually shaped property. It's not even a proper pie shape that we normally might see at the end of a cul-de-sac. Uh, the challenge that this property has is that they're very narrow at the front of their property, but they get rather large rather quickly. Um, and we'll show you in some of the slides how that affects them by having to have that twenty-foot setback for, uh, fencing. We can go ahead and move to the next slide. And this is just stating that our code currently requires a twenty-foot setback for fencing. Within that first twenty feet, you do have to maintain forty-two inches in height. Um, the applicant is requesting a five-foot-high, six-inch fence. Um, and that would be three feet away from the front property line. So this slide illustrates how this plays out. The yellow lines are the property lines. That shows you at the end of Villa Isle Circle how they sit on the property. The blue line is where they would like to locate their fence at five feet high, six inches. And the red line is the twenty-foot setback. So essentially what happens is at the blue line, they only have about ninety feet in width, um, uh, for their property where the fence would need to go. As soon as they step down to the twenty-foot mark, um, the property widens to about a hundred and ten feet. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it does require them to add more fencing than would be typical if they were up closer to the property. But what also happens on their property is they, um, have a pretty significant grade difference. One of the things that they are trying to accomplish by this gate in their front yard is as people come down the cul-de-sac, um, they're essentially shining their car lights directly into their front windows. And they do have, um, bedrooms in their front of their property. And so by having a gate up at the top of that slope, it can help to deflect some of that light coming into their home. As soon as we place it at the bottom of the slope, it really doesn't have the same effect to, um, maintain that privacy for them. This illustrates that as well. So the slide here shows, um, just as a rendering, this is not an exact replication of their house nor of the fence, uh, nor of the cars that may drive down their street, but we wanted to give you a little illustration here. Um, so this shows at three feet where they would like to put the fence. Um, that does also allow them to have some landscaping, so that will help to, um, minimize the impact the fence look would have on the, uh, rest of the cul-de-sac. And then what we wanted to illustrate again is what, um, the code would currently require that fence to be back at twenty feet and how that changes the effect of the property. The other hardship that, I just wanted to go back for one second, Tyler, sorry. Um, that this illustrates is, um, the openness that by having that fence at twenty feet really creates on the property. At three feet, they're really able to create security by blocking off the front to, of their property. Um, they are on a cul-de-sac that only has two other homes and so it really is somewhat isolated. Um, as soon as we move that fence back to the twenty-foot mark, you can see how much of their property is really open and exposed and just more, um, insecure. So moving on to this next slide. You can see a rendering here of the five-foot-high, six-inch fence, um, in, in the current view. We're showing it at twenty feet. And then do we have another slide here is at three feet? Um, we really do feel that, uh, similar to the case that we saw several months ago, that the impact will be somewhat minimal in terms of changing the character of the neighborhood. Um, there are only two other homes on this cul-de-sac. And so we really don't feel that it will have a huge impact on changing the character overall. Uh, we did meet with the CDC and discuss this matter with them at length. CDC is recommending that we, um, approve or recommend to the council approval of the variance tonight. We were able to make all of the seven findings that are required for fences in that front yard setback, um, including the unusual circumstances, shape of the property, and also minimum impact in changing the characteristics of, um, of the community. With that, we are recommending that you open the public hearing and, um, approve the variance request as it is before you this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions of staff before we open it up to the public?
Were, were there any neighbor objections?
We have not received any neighbor objections at this time. And we do have in your packet the letter that was submitted. And, um, were their signatures also included in that, Tyler?
Yeah, the, the other two neighbors have signed that they, they like it.
Oh, they actually signed it up?
They actually have a fence already there.
They do.
There is a fence there. They're just moving it so it's, you know, more accommodated.
It is a little bit shorter than what they are currently requesting. What, what's behind you now on the screen, um, is what's there, or what was there, uh, prior to this request. Um, and it, as you can see, the pilasters that are there, the columns are a little bit shorter than the five feet, six inches. Um, but it will still have this open look, um, although a little bit taller.
It's, it's, it looks nice, it's open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Greg, go ahead.
Well, we have.
Well, we have to open it up. Good try, all right.
Trying.
Um, I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the public. Does, does any members of the public, would they like to come speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the council and I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Jared? Uh, yes, Secretary of State, the motion is to, uh, adopt resolution number two zero one three, three two six four, approving the variance permit request. Councilman Mills? Councilman Fessnelli?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Barnett?
I'm here, yes.
Mary's? Yes, thank you very much. Our second hearing is scheduled, um, is a scheduled six-month review of the extended hours of operation for Rockwells, uh, and the Post. Jennifer, do you have a report, please?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you'll recall, um, earlier this summer, we had a request for conditional use permit to extend the hours of operation past eleven o'clock um, for Rockwells and the Post. At that time, the council decided to pr- approve the conditional use permit with one of the conditions being that the requests come back in six months for review. At the time, there had been some incidents where folks were hanging out in the parking lot and causing some nuisance and disturbance um, to the adjacent neighbors. There were also some outdoor noises and music after eleven PM that were also causing some concerns for the neighbors. Um, with the conditional use permit that was approved at that time, several conditions were put in place to try to ensure that those nuisances would no longer happen. Um, the applicant has been in compliance with those conditions. They've posted signs ensuring that folks aren't loitering. They've hired security to canvass the parking lot to ensure that folks move on once the restaurant and the post is closed. Um, and also the council granted them provision for, for special events, um, throughout the year. There were three events so far that have been held. Um, one of the conditions of the program was that the post or the operator would contact the city so that we could make sure the residents were aware of those special events before they occurred. Uh, one of the special events, the most recent, uh, we didn't have advance notice, so we were not able to notify the neighbors. And we did receive a complaint and a concern that there was a special event and there was some noise um, and some concern that it may happen again. Uh, we did talk to the operator. We made them aware. We do feel that this was a one-time oversight and they are back on track with understanding the conditions and moving forward with compliance. We did meet with CDC on this matter. We discussed it at great lengths. And, um, given the operator's compliance up until the most recent, um, and also their participation with several of the Villa Park events that are coming up, CDC is actually asking for the council to consider, um, extending the condition to not only the four events that they currently have, um, approval for, but increasing that to twenty events. That would allow them the, what we consider to be about eight events that are, uh, Villa Park oriented, if you will. And then essentially one event a month, um, that the operator would be able to have. Um, again, that condition would be with advance notice. Uh, we've s- uh, made that language a little strong, stronger this time so that we would actually have seventeen-two hours of advance notice, um, in writing to the city manager. That would be acceptable through email, um, so that the city manager would be able to have the time to contact the neighbors and make sure they were aware. Um, we have also changed the condition to allow for one year of operation before they have to come back to the council for additional review. However, it's very important to note, not only for the council's benefit, but for those at home and those in the audience, that the moment the operator was out of compliance with the conditions, they couldn't, they will be brought back to the council for consideration. At that time, we can either strengthen the conditions or we could revoke the conditional use permit if it was determined that they were not operating in good faith. Uh, with that, we are recommending approval with the conditions as I've described them and the recommendation of the CDC. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Okay.
Uh, Jennifer, there was one thing that you forgot to mention is that we are also recommending that he be given an additional two events before the year ends because of the holiday season. This, this calendar year also.
In addition to the four he already has, he's consumed three and so you're saying three more before the end of the year?
Correct, just because it's the, it's the holidays and people may want to book the banquet room and do, and do whatever.
I do have a question about the complaints. Was, was there a trend for the complaints at all? Is there a certain party alone or is it?
Um, at, again, it's my understanding that there was just the one complaint after the November, um, event that was an oversight for them not, um, notifying us in advance and we didn't receive additional complaints after that.
As I, I, from what I hear, this, they've been doing a very good job of keeping people from loitering. And this, this looks like a tunnel right here between the building and the, and the salon. And also that, uh, the, the people have moved out to the middle of the parking lot. And I believe that's okay with all the other employees of these centers. Everything's running pretty smooth.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on this item?
Hi, I'm Janice Wallace, uh, one seven eight seven two Bishop Circle. And I just have a couple of quick things to say. Um, number one is, I think, and I speak for most of the residents on Bishop Circle, that for the most part, the noise levels have been well-controlled. Um, they're okay for now. We still, on weekend nights, hear the bass and, um, crowd noise from within the bar. I think maybe on the patio, um, it's not to the po- it's better than it was. It's not to the point where, you know, we can't sleep. But, so I, I totally give them credit for that and thank them. I know David has spoken to Billy a couple of times, um, about certain things and they've been able to work things out, which is good. Um, with regard to the new, the proposed changes, especially from the four nights until two AM to twenty nights to two AM, um, I'm not sure it was, I know it was recommended by the CDC, but who are this CDC? Is, is that, is that committee composed of merchants? Um, just, I know you all are on the committee, or is it no residents at all?
Well, we have, it's an open meeting. It's also, it'll notice for seventy-two hours. Deanna Fessnelli and I serve on, on that committee.
Okay.
Along with the city manager and of course our planning staff as well. And it's open to the public. And so we have notices out before we have our meeting, three, at least three days.
Where would the notices be? Like on, on the website or, because, uh, we, we knew nothing of it. And we didn't even know for sure if you took input from us at that point.
Well, that's typically how we do it. It's a, it's an open, it's an open meeting that we have and you're welcome to come.
Okay.
No, we did not contact you specifically. No, we did not.
Well, even if we, you know, it wouldn't have to be specifically, but, um, okay, so we, we would like to just give our input for it, um, because we were unaware of the, the December second meeting. Um, we think that going from four events, I know six months ago, when you all proposed four events to two, you know, we weren't real thrilled, but it was okay. So we accepted it and, um, thought, okay, we'll see how it goes. Um, and then now, oh, the other thing is, um, we did not receive notice of the meeting tonight. Were we supposed to receive notice regarding the changes possibly in the CUP?
I know we, we mailed out pub- notices to the public hearing and then months ago, I, I specifically recall emailing you and several of the other residents about tonight's meeting.
We knew the meeting was coming. We just didn't know that it. We knew the meeting was coming. We just didn't know that it was going to jump from four to the proposal to 20 events per year.
I did not notice you specifically of that, no. You know, I do apologize. But that's what the public hearing notice is for, is so you can come tonight to the city council and address your concerns with them, the policy and decision-makers.
But were we supposed to get noticed by mail too or no?
Yeah, I, it, notice went out. I'll have to see what happened.
We didn't get it.
We send it 10 days in advance.
Okay, well, as far as I know, the neighbors didn't get it either, so maybe it's a post office issue, you know. Anyway, I wanted to let you know that we found out yesterday about what was happening or proposed tonight. Anyway, let's see, what I would like, I just feel like 29, 20 events per year will extend the crowd noise until 2:30 in the morning, 2:00 to 2:30 because by the time they get out of there, you know, that's when we hear some of it. Most of it is within, I think, within the bar. Maybe they're on the patio, maybe the doors are open. I don't know. But it, you know, that's a lot of nights to hear noise at 2:00 to 2:30 in the morning. I think we can compromise, and I haven't talked to the neighbors about this, but I thought that perhaps if we could do it one day a month or one night a month, that would be eight more for him and, you know, eight less that we would be, you know, willing to go with. The other thing I had, question I had was, as far as I know, there's nothing in writing about the rules on the nights that they are allowed to stay open till 2:00. In other words, you know, where, as it is now, when they're open till midnight, at 10 o'clock, the speaker's supposed to go off and at 12 o'clock, stop serving. And as far as I know, there's no, nothing in writing for the other nights. So that might be a thought that we should...
It's still 10 o'clock every night as far as the music.
Even till 2:00? Okay, all right.
That's the intent here. It's the outside music we're trying to debate that particular issue.
But then would they still be allowed to serve alcohol till 2:00?
Yes.
Okay, so people would still be leaving after that. Okay.
But in contrast to that, I believe that Mr. Skepikin and you have a phone contact as well.
Yes.
And we, and of course, I know that he encourages you to, if there's any problems, to contact them.
We do have that number, but you have to remember that at that point, we're up because we've been woken up. And, you know, I feel like we shouldn't be the ones that police at 2:00 AM. We could talk to him about it the next day, but at that, you know, what's happened has already happened at 2:00, so. Okay, and then just one quick thing. I think the one-year follow-up is good. You know, it's, we'll see how it goes. I suggest the 12, 12 nights, special event nights till 2:00 per year. And hopefully, you know, we'll, we can work it out.
That's what we have, if you need to use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janice. Jared, just curious why, what is the process for noticing a CDC meeting? I know it's a 72-hour notice, but little concerned that the Wallaces didn't receive that notice or how would they be normally notified of that?
Their due diligence. They're to check the city's website.
Pretty much the city website.
I don't notice, I mean, I possibly cannot notice every concerned resident about every meeting that we have. So we post it to the website, we post it to the television out front. Committee meetings, you know, we don't overnotice as we would a city council meeting where we send it out on the E network.
Yeah.
And we had residents come to that meeting.
Oh, did you really?
So people, people did know the notice. We had the residents come on a different issue that we had.
No, there's several issues.
Yeah, we had several issues, so they did show up.
Did anyone show up for this particular issue?
No.
No one for this particular issue?
Not even, not even the owner of the restaurant showed up for that.
So the other residents were following the website. They happened to see it and they came. Okay. That was a question. All right, anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Billy?
Good night, or good evening. I didn't realize, and I apologize, you know, I didn't realize there was, was there only one complaint that we had? I want to just kind of understand that. I had a manager there that was supposed to make everybody aware of that as I notified it in the Villa Park magazine as 1 o'clock. And I had the flyers up, Kelly's and Susie's and Rockwell's. They were till 1:00 again, so my apologies for not getting that to you guys. Was there, I've been checking with Dave for a while, week after week, and I mean, we've been talking, everything's been good. Has it got louder since?
I mean, since June 25th, there's been probably, I would say, half a dozen times. You and I talked two times, I think, during that time. And you made a tremendous effort to block off the parking lot so they couldn't come back by the house and put signs up. And you've done everything that's reasonable. There was a couple of times where my son complained. We didn't call anybody because, you know, he was, he was a guy in the parking lot.
We have the security out there and that's what his main job is. And I checked with him when I stopped by or something. I said, hey, when it closes, push everybody to their cars, get them out of here. And I mean...
We don't want to be complaining all the time.
No, I don't blame you.
It's not necessarily that these people in the parking lot, it sounds like they're hooping and hollering too busy inside. And that's what I...
See, sometimes, yeah, sometimes maybe the doors, when the doors open, I try to keep all the doors closed. And, you know, especially in the winter time, it's not hard to keep the doors closed at all. But, um...
Billy, it's kind of hard because the residents can't hear this conversation.
Oh, okay.
So it really shouldn't happen like this. So why don't you tell us all your stuff and then we can invite the Wallaces back up if they'd like to come up again?
Okay. I was kind of hoping actually to get the extent, try, I thought things were going so well, I could ask for it to stay open till 1:00. Last call at 1:00 because we're really not picking up any extra business. You know, I know we have last call at 1:00 at midnight and kind of like let them kind of have their, finish their drink and get out of there by 12:30 or so. But that's really not working. People get out, movies at 11 o'clock, they're not going to come there. I've seen a couple of the council come by there and I've been out front and they said, wow, how come nobody's here? Which is, it's, we don't have, you know, it shuts down too early, basically. And I mean, if there's any way that we can, just on the Friday and Saturday nights, and it's not every, it's not every week because if it's slow, they start shutting down anyways. You know, we start cutting servers and cut, you know, and stuff like that. Leave a bartender there by himself, you know, with the bar back to help close up. And that's what I was kind of hoping for, but, you know, I didn't realize we had so many issues that, you know, were still going on a little bit, but...
Billy, I know, I know that you want to stay open till 1:00 and I've kind of monitored a little bit. I mean, there's times we get out of meetings here, there's nobody over there. And I sympathize with you as a business owner to see that. And I, I'm against you staying open till 1:00 because I don't think it's good for all the residents. I think to compensate for that, we want to allow you 20 days extra to be able to have an event. You know, 20 days out of 365 is not that many. And you have months that should be busier, like December should be busier and July. And there's certain times that you're just going to do that. I don't think it's a good idea to stay open till 1:00. I don't know if you'll make that much more money, to be honest with you, at that time.
It's more, I think it's more somebody getting there and they're usually gone by 1:00. I think just getting people there, knowing that they need to get there before 12:00 so they can put their last order in.
It's, yeah, the perception.
You know, I really appreciate the 20 days a month. That'll even, I'm thinking that could even cause some confusion with, you know, is it open till, you know, late this night or is it, you know, midnight? You know, going back and forth on that, so it'd be a guess. There's a lot of work and effort that goes into putting those events on, just trying to get the flyers put together. So, I mean, that's going to be, if we're doing two a week, you know, two a month or if I use them in the summertime or something like that, maybe do them in the summertime, you know.
Well, the 20 days would be up to you. I mean, those would be, you know, up to you to have banquets. I mean, I think all of us, as well as the residents, need to understand this is a business. It is, it is an area that has multiple businesses. You've got Ralph's, you're going to have noise here. You've done a great job controlling the noise. And we want to see you succeed and we're trying to give you some tools that might help you succeed as well as keep the neighbors not necessarily 100% happy, but 90% happy.
Yeah, and I want that too. Nothing wrong. I want, you know. But whatever you guys can decide on that, I mean, I didn't, when I was sitting there, I didn't think 1:00 was going to fly, but I figured I'm going to give it a shot. So, yeah, whatever you guys decide, I appreciate it.
Well, the lectern, you can readdress this later if this works out, so I don't think...
Yeah. Okay.
If it's actually the question of late-night noise, like in the neighbors, that's the only concern we really have.
Like with the nights they were talking about, you know, I think even on the 1:00 nights, and we don't go till 2:00, we only go till 1:00. Even on the notice that says 1:00. We only go till, you know, 1:00, you know, on those busy nights. And then other nights, we kind of just, you know, we start serving at midnight and people kind of wander out after that. But, I mean, you know, people are getting used to it being midnight anyway. So, you know, either it's going to be busy, you have a big group coming over, or you don't get anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. All right, anyone else in the audience like to come up and speak to this?
Sorry for having the sidebar conversation earlier.
No, it's okay. No problem.
You know, a couple of things that are important. Billy has been very accommodating. And, you know, as contentious as it was in June, it's not contentious today. And if there is a problem, I feel very comfortable in picking up the telephone and calling him. I've only done that twice in the six-month period of time. And basically, he's reacted both times that I called. And so from that standpoint, it's worked out very well, the night that we exchanged telephone numbers. I have had some other complaints from some of the other people. To be clear, you have one account where my wife had complained and it was the night that they didn't notify us in advance. And just happened to be coincidence that there was somebody out. And I believe it was, what, midnight? The band was still playing? What was it?
No, it was just close to 1:00.
Close to 1:00. And he got out of control one night. I mean, that's no big deal. But the pattern of staying open late at night, this is still a bedroom community. And extending it until 2:00 in the morning, you know, 15, 20 nights a year, I mean, it doesn't make any difference as long as things are under control. I don't want you to be under the impression there was only one time, you know, in the six-month period. It averaged one a month and we only complained twice to Billy and once to the city. So, you know, that's a pretty good average compared to what we were experiencing, you know, before things, you know, where we sat down and started to visit. So Billy and I can pick up the phone and call each other anytime we want to. So from that standpoint, I'm pretty comfortable with allowing him to try this. If it gets out of hand, then I'll start to tighten it up.
Thank you.
I'd like to make sure I understood that. So what I heard you, because let me just tell you, my concern here was that when we have a very specific group here that's affected, that that group really is entitled to specific notice of the CDC meeting and of this. It's the same in the legal field, you know, we publish, we do whatever. But when we know we have a specifically affected group, we go out of our way to make sure that group knows and has an opportunity to be heard. And frankly, that was my biggest concern, but you are here and you're the most affected people. And I think I just heard you say you don't have a problem with the 15 or 20 days as long as you can monitor it and there's some oversight or whatever. Is that what I heard?
Billy's been very cooperative.
Okay, so, so you really don't have a problem at this point with the opportunity to have the 20 days? Is that what, I just want to make sure I heard that.
My wife does. I'm gone a lot.
Now the truth surfaces.
So, in that case, I share her complaint then.
You better.
Absolutely.
I have to.
That's a good point.
That was one of my concerns.
Uh-huh.
And the other one was, I know we keep talking about, we give notice, we give notice, we give notice. Well, I appreciate that notice is given, but if it's a noise issue, what good does it do to give notice that we're going to have a noisy night? I mean, what is that, so you can mentally prepare to stay up? I really don't understand what the notice does to abate the problem. I'm just, apparently it does something.
I can tell you what one of my neighbors does. He leaves.
Okay.
That's terrible that we have neighbors that have to do that. It really is.
I just wanted to understand because if it's a noise problem, I just wasn't sure how giving notice three days in advance that it was going to be noisy helps. I mean, you can do shutters or...
In his case, he leaves. He and his wife leave.
Maybe so we don't call the police or Billy or complain to them. That was what my thought was, to keep us kind of quiet.
My concern simply, you know, I'd like to see Billy be able to have as much time as he can and, you know, make the place active and successful. By the same token, as I've made it clear from the beginning, the community's established and my sympathies lie with the existing group, so as long as we can reconcile it, I'm good. So my question is, you know, are you all satisfied now that you've had an opportunity to come deal with us here? Is that good? Do we need to have, do we need to have another meeting that's specifically noticed to that group so that that group that's affected has an opportunity to sit down and have some one-on-one with Billy and the CDC? And if you think that's a benefit, that's the way I'm going to lean. And if not, you know, I'm happy with this.
No, I think we know that we can come and talk to you when we need to. And quite candidly, one of the conversations that Billy and I had, he let his security team go and put another security team in place because they weren't doing what they were supposed to do. So, you know, from that standpoint, he's been very open and very accommodating. So, you know, as long as that kind of thing happens, then, you know, we can work it out.
All the questions I had.
Oh, I have to ask the question then, is it, it's just a noise period, no matter what happens, basically, after 10 o'clock?
Well, obviously, it disturbs your sleep. You know, I work, you know, and I'm not up until 2:00 in the morning.
Me either, but, but after 10 o'clock, I, you know, that's, anytime that there's a ruckus after 10 o'clock, I do know about it.
We don't, we don't complain after 10:00. We don't complain, you know, generally, if anything's going on at 11 o'clock. But after midnight, my wife gets pretty animated when something's going on, but... She doesn't complain a lot.
It does sound, though, that you have a nice relationship with the business owner.
Yeah.
It's worked out. It's not 100%. We have open communication with the city if you have a complaint, if there's been a complaint, there's been a mistake. I understand that. We've come a long way from six months ago.
Yeah, six months ago, I was pissed off.
Yes, we've come a long way. And I don't see the communication changing. I don't see us, you know, shutting the door on any sort of communication and any sort of improvement, so it's good to see.
Is there another arrangement that you prefer?
No, I've got his phone number if I need it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any others that'd like to come speak? Billy, did I see your hand up again?
No, no.
Janice, come on up.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No problem.
The thing, the thing that I'm concerned about is that not quite twice a month, we will be, you know, up until or hearing noise until 2:00, 2:30 in the morning with this 20 events a year. That's a lot. It's not, I want to reiterate, the noise that we hear used to be people, I think, loitering in the parking lot. I don't think they do that anymore. I think that's under control. The noise that we hear is the bass of the band. And I'm assuming those doors are closed and it's still coming through. It's loud. And the hooping and hollering, wherever the people are, within the bar or on the patio. That's, that's the noise that we're hearing now. So, I don't know how you, you can't control that. How do you, you can't control somebody's hooping and hollering when they're having a good time and maybe a few drinks. And how do you quiet the band? You're not going to do that either. So I'm just seeing that at 2:00 in the morning is 20 times a year. Doesn't seem like much if you don't live nearby, but...
If it were 15 times a year, does that make it better for you?
I, my suggestion was once a month, tying, I know there's like community events. Tie the community event in with the late night and see how it goes. And if it's not an issue, then we revisit it next year and maybe add more if it's okay. That was just my suggestion.
Okay.
So, that's, hopefully that clears up a little bit.
Thank you, Janice. All right, I bring it back up to council. Greg?
Is there any other things we could do or suggest or maybe suggest about annoying?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I might make one suggestion. Because it sounds like the amplified music, either inside or out, right now, the condition stands that there's no amplified exterior music after 10:00 PM. I think that we could strengthen the language to also, and I'll ask the operator, that we would not have interior amplified music either after midnight. So that way, the bass sound and hooping and hollering would also be minimized at that point in time. But, but again, only even to midnight on those special event days, not beyond that. They still would have their 11:00 PM hour typically.
I'd like to bring up that we don't have any complaints from anybody else. And I'm not really hearing a complaint from the Wallaces either. They're describing, but it's not a complaint. We have a business here that's established. If we were hearing complaints from the neighbors across the street, I would understand it, or other people from Bishop, but we haven't had any. So I think we have to respect the fact that this is a shopping center, that we allowed a restaurant with music and with booze, if you will, to operate at a certain time. And so far, it's running quite nicely. If there's an issue, we can bring it back, correct? I mean, we can bring, we can cite the owner if there's an issue. But we already have a lot of vacancies in this center. And it's something that I want to make sure that the council just keeps in the back of their mind, that we want, are trying to attract people to come here. And we're trying to do it and keep that bedroom community also. So there's a fine line. And somehow, I think we've done a good job in the last six months in doing that.
Okay, good comment. Billy?
I want to thank the Wallaces for coming up and speaking on our behalf. I mean, I'm glad that I feel better that we have more of an open communication line with Dave. And even Mike, I've talked to Mike, his neighbor, a couple of times. But whatever you guys decide, I'm good with. And if it becomes an issue, I'm a phone call away. You know, we can change things, you know, the next day if we need to. If it's a Friday night, somebody gets a hold of me on Saturday, I'm right there involved in it on Saturday. So it's not a repeat. Security guards are... On a busy night, I get two of them in there. When I know it's going to be busier with the bigger, with the busier band, I bring two of them in there to... And their job is to quiet that patio, to keep it as quiet as it is. There is no speakers on at the outside. I don't even put those on during, up until ten o'clock at night. We just, I just leave that off. Enough music inside to where... And I think that's a big, a big part of before, we have the speakers on the patio going. That's why it probably seemed a lot louder then. But, you know, whenever I can do to help, make everybody get along, that's what I want to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, bring it back to council for comments.
Yeah, I have to disagree with Deanna a little bit. I think we do have some concerns that have been expressed multiple occasions. And it is focused on a small group because it shoots up this alleyway. But it's still an issue. They were there. And we've moved the nuisance, if you will, into the people, not the other way around. So I have to give them great deference. However, I think that Jennifer's suggestion is a good idea. First of all, we monitor, we trail us for a year. Secondly, we can bring it back when we need to do it. And thirdly, I think if we balance out the number of days and maybe we do the midnight amplified music cutoff inside as well, I think that's a good balance. They're already communicating. And if there's a problem, if there's a problem, you know, we can deal with it. So maybe we do, you know, every month plus the extra three, make it fifteen. Kill the amplified music inside after midnight on those nights. And then see how it goes and review it again and whether we can expand it or contract or whatever happens. That's my thought as to a reasonable balance.
Well, certainly, a common theme tonight has kind of been the bass. And if it was not amplified after midnight internally, I'm sure that would help. So that's a decent idea. Deanna, have a comment?
I think I... Yeah, I'm still thinking.
Deborah, Greg, any comments?
I... Deborah, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. You guys are on the CDC. I'll listen.
Well, I think it just boils down to somehow monitoring the lower frequencies, the bass, the subwoofers. That's a problem.
Mm-hmm. It carries.
It carries.
It does.
And if there's some way we could alleviate that...
Billy?
Yeah, I think...
Now, that would be big.
As long as Janice and David are... And I think Mike and Suzie would be very happy about that because they, other folks have children like you do. So if there's some way that you could have that...
I'm going to put trees around that planter, I have that little planter pocket. I'm about to put trees around there, you know, try to ground some of the music over there in the tree.
But I also think you can also turn the bass.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, of course.
That might be all really the case for giving a shot.
It annoys this patio, you know, when I see it and I've heard some of it's... It's a little loud on the patio, it's where it can speak, you know, to monitor more.
Deborah?
Deborah?
Yes, all of this has been very interesting. I want to preface everything I say by making it clear that I think the addition of the post to our town center has been a good addition to the community. And it's been lively and it's enlivened our town center in general. But I think it's important for us to get back to where we started from. It completely changed the dynamic of our town center. It changed the character of the town center for those who had lived here prior to the opening of the post. We went so far as even rewriting an ordinance to allow for something that had never been before. So that's where we started from. People moved into a community with one set of expectations. And the council changed those expectations. But we put some conditions on those things. And this was a test period, is the way I saw it. This was a six-month test period. One of the things that bothers me is that we're in the middle of a six-month test period, and everyone is very well aware of that. There are four special dates that have been granted, which weren't part of the original proposal because it made sense to permit it. And yet, one of those was not even notified to the city council. To me, when you are in your six-month test period, that's when you are on your very best behavior. So that bothers me a lot to think that, whether it was a mistake or not, you had three special events and you're batting, you know, sixty-six percent. You know, one of those things you didn't even bother. That really makes me unhappy. It's like you're pushing the envelope, pushing the envelope. It's not like it's difficult to walk across the parking lot and hand a paper in to our city manager and let him know you're going to have a special event. You know you're going to have it. You're promoting it to get people there. So I really think that... Pardon?
I wasn't hiding it.
All right, well, but the fact of the matter is it was a condition of making all of these changes to accommodate a new business, a completely different business than has ever been here before. And so I think that that really needs to be paid attention to substantially. One of the conditions is, and it's not written that it says email is okay, or I don't see it that way, although I saw it in the narrative earlier on. The condition...
But that's for the new one.
Okay, pardon me? Where does it say that? Because I'm looking at item five, where it talks about it, and it doesn't say...
Yes, it does.
Where?
There were the...
Where does it say it?
It's, I just, I read it, it was submitted to go.
I saw it in the narrative.
Yeah.
It was in the narrative.
Councilmember Paula, you are correct. It's not in the resolution and we will make that change.
Thank you, because we are voting on the resolution, not the narrative.
Correct.
And so if it's going to state that it's in the email, then it has to say that. But I actually am opposed to us having email being adequate because emails can get lost and sometimes our server is down. And Rockwell's is right there! You know, if it was a huge city and we were expecting somebody to drive, you know, fifteen miles across town to deliver paperwork to City Hall, I would say that's an unreasonable thing to request. But it's not unreasonable to walk across the parking lot and hand it to the city manager so that we're assured that that... Especially given, you know, the dropped ball on the test period. So that's, it's not written into the resolution. I would prefer that it not be written into the resolution under the conditions of approval. I would agree that perhaps one day a month would be adequate. We could bump it up to one day a month and see how things go. But I think it's a huge jump to go to twenty days, twenty days a year in addition to special city events. Is that how I understand the proposal? That in addition to staying open on Halloween Fest, because after everybody takes their kids around town center for trick-or-treating, of course, they're going to drag their kids into a bar for a couple of drinks till 2:00 AM. I mean, seriously, that's not going to happen. So, you know, city events, eh, some of those city events, yeah. Most of those city events, probably not. They're community-oriented. You're doing the Santa tour, you're here on the boat parade, it's kids. So there'll be some folks that want to stay out till two.
It's not twenty, it's not the, in addition.
Okay, so altogether, I still think, I still think that's too many. I still think one a month is already really, truly pushing it. I also am very much opposed to adding an additional two special events for the duration of this calendar year. We've already approved what we've approved, which was allowing them for during the six-month test period. They've used three, one of them without even noticing us. And so reward them by giving them three more, three more or two more. I don't think you reward someone when they were, when they purposefully or accidentally did not adhere to the terms of the conditional use permit. That's just me, not trying to be buddy-buddy with everybody, but trying to be somebody that believes in our position as setting the standard, passing the ordinance, rule of law. That's what we're supposed to be about here. So I certainly don't think we should be extending the number of additional overnight days. I would agree with the conversation about amplified music not going on between, after ten PM, even on those additional nights outside. It does get noisy. It gets noisy in the middle of the day. We were out front before the fraud prevention event and we couldn't even have a conversation. There must have been a football game on because people were cheering and shouting. It is very, very noisy. And the noise ricochets and that's just people. That's not even music. So I don't know what it's like up here at night. But I really feel like it's our responsibility to do our level best to take care of the people who are living here first. We're changing the rules on them. We're changing the rules on them. And they've already been extremely accommodating. I like the conditions as they're written. I say no, I say no more than twelve additional events a year. And that the addition that was suggested by Jennifer about the amplified music after midnight being included under, I guess, item five, under the conditions of approval. Oh, I would also like to say I would, I'm very, very appreciative of the owner's additional enforcement that they've been providing with security. I think that's been very effective. And that's probably the one reason why this thing is going to probably continue on. And your business will have an opportunity to thrive here. My input.
Thank you. And any other comments?
I think that if we're going to not allow them twenty, what you're going to find is when we have a boat parade or Halloween Fest, that they're going to close down early. Because they, I don't believe, you're correct. They're not going to make money with children coming into the bar. So I'm not necessarily sure they're going to be as friendly to our community events as they should be because I don't think that that's a friendly gesture here coming from the council.
They'll be able to stay up until midnight.
What I keep hearing from the residents is, I want an Italian restaurant over at that gas station. I want a lazy dog over there at that gas station. I don't know, I can't go anywhere past Ralph's, my house, with people telling me they want another restaurant over there. How are we going to accommodate that? And Deborah, I know you've heard it, you've heard, no, you've heard it also.
I have absolutely heard it and I agree.
So here, we're punishing one person, which quite frankly, I really don't see any complaints here. We've been talking about this now almost forty-five minutes.
Not punishing anyone.
And I actually think we're being quite unfair to this business owner. I don't understand why we're putting such restrictions on him when we haven't received complaints from the entire community. I have respect for the people on Bishop, and I think we've accommodated them. We give special notice. City manager has to remember to give special notice to them, which is not a problem. But I think we cannot run this town center with one street. I understand that they were here first. When I moved into the neighborhood, we didn't have seven hundred kids at Villa Park Elementary. What am I supposed to do? You changed the neighborhood on me. You know, it's going to change.
I mean, Dave and I seem to have open communication as well. I'm not going to blow them off or anything, you know.
So, those are my thoughts.
We're not putting restrictions. In fact, we rewrote our city's ordinance. I'll remind you of that. Just the opposite of putting restrictions. We did everything in our power to absolutely open things up, to provide them...
Well, there was a mistake in the ordinance because we had Ralph's staying open past what our ordinance said. And nobody stopped Ralph's from staying open. Nobody did.
Yes, Ralph's is not staying open till 2:00 AM.
There was a time when it was open twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
Yep, and nobody stopped them.
That was way before my time.
But this, but the council...
There was no base, though.
That's true.
There was no base.
There were trucks, though. There were trucks.
I'm providing my input.
Yeah, no, we got it.
But I think that the big issue is the noise.
Yeah, right.
If that's abated and there's no complaints, you know, I...
It is the noise.
That's the only issue. Otherwise, you'd be up until two.
At CDC, was there any discussion in making this a six-month review again or just the one year?
It can be reviewed at any time.
Yeah. I definitely like your idea, Jennifer. I think I heard bass quite a bit and it does travel. There's no question about that. So I think that's a really good one. I do agree that going from the four events to twenty is a pretty huge jump. Maybe there is a middle ground somewhere. I'm not so sure if that's going to make a difference, you know, whether it's fifteen or twenty. So those are my comments. Overall, I'm very pleased, Billy and Dave, with the communication with you guys and being able to call at any time, and that's huge. I mean, you guys really repaired that well, and I'm very proud of you both for doing that. And like Deanna said, we don't have a lot of other residents here, you know, piling in to talk about this. So that's a good thing. So we have talked about it a long time. So I'd like to ask for a motion from someone.
I'd just like to say, you know, for what it's worth, I concur with what I see as the common position of the mayor, Brad, and Deborah. I really see you basically in the same position. And frankly, I'm in the same position as well. I'm in favor of giving Billy all that he can responsibly handle without bothering the neighbors. But I'm not going to keep people up two days, even one and a half day a week at one or two in the morning. They did not move into a nuisance. They're in a quiet neighborhood. It moved to them. So I'm sure we can find a way to get it done. I agree with what you just said, and that is that I think we take it a step at a time. If you want to make it six months instead of a year so that maybe we can expand it some more, I don't have any problem with that. But I think it needs to be more like the once a month, hold the base down. And if you want to come back in six months, that's fine with me. I just don't want to keep neighbors up. If that was my house over there, I don't care if I was the only one that got the noise. If it was my house and I had to get up and I'm trying to go to work at two o'clock when this band's pounding away, I'd be really upset. That's not what I bought into here. And so that's my, I agree with the two of you.
Well, then, why don't we go ahead and... I'm willing to make that motion with, that we would approve this resolution with the following changes under the conditions of approval.
Substitute motion, right?
Well, no, this is the, this is the original motion. No one has made a motion yet. No one has made a motion yet. This is the original motion. So these would be the edits to the conditions of approval. Under item five, the owner shall be allowed twelve special events a year during special, continuing on with that sentence, with special events.
Twelve?
Yes, twelve.
I thought we were talking, we were saying fifteen.
One a month.
And in addition, in addition to community events? You have the Rotary, you have the Women's League, the Halloween Fest.
Yeah, I quickly wrote down boat parade, Santa tour, Halloween Fest, concert. It's not in the town center. It's at the high school. Our picnic, which is at the lake.
And the Women's League event.
And then a Women's League event. Six that I can count. Couple more, maybe throughout the year.
Well, I don't know that the Halloween Fest lends itself to it. The boat parade may. I would be willing to go fifteen. I would be willing to go fifteen.
Including city events?
Yes, including the city events. And with the addition of the no amplified music after midnight on those nights.
Period, interior and exterior.
Correct. And then approval, by the way it's currently written...
Actually, excuse me, if I could just say, we have no amplified exterior after ten PM, inclusive of those nights.
Nothing exterior, correct.
No exterior amplified, after ten PM.
Nothing interior after midnight.
So the interior music would be after midnight. Okay, nothing interior after midnight. That would be under item five where you've added that. And then, the way it's currently written, these events must be submitted in writing and approved by the city manager seventy-two hours in advance of the event.
With email.
Excuse me?
With email is acceptable. It's acceptable in the court of law. You're not going to accept it in City Hall. What if the owner's, what if the owner's out?
I want to just call Jared on the phone.
Council, could you comment?
I would be fine.
You, it's up to the city how they want to accept service. If you find email efficient, if you don't, if you want a telephone call or some other means, you can specify. It's a determination to the council.
I think Deborah's got a good point. Why can't he just walk across the street?
I think email is better.
I don't think that's an issue.
Email's better than phone calls in writing.
Well, it says in writing, but what if Billy wants to walk across the street, say, I'm going to have a special event on the sixteenth?
You know, writing, a text...
It says in writing.
Writing, so.
We just leave it at writing.
Billy and I text message, so. As long as I'm notified, to me, it personally doesn't matter. Because that gives me the opportunity to notify the...
Cause that gives me the opportunity to notify the.
The only reason this has become a sticking point with me is that one mistake during the six-month test period, that's the only reason. So I'm hoping that there are no mistakes during the next one-year test period.
Most, most days I'm not there between eight and five.
Yeah, okay. Oh. Alrighty. Well, you have a manager there too. Um, but with those couple of small changes then, if we just leave it as it's written, does this give him the freedom to walk across the street if he wants to? Or to text or whatever? Okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, in writing, as long as I have something documented.
Okay, so that's, that's the motion, which makes minor changes to the conditions of approval that came out of the CDC. It's very minor.
Second.
Would um, alright, I have a substitute motion. Um, unless you'd be willing to change the motion to six months. I'd like to review it in six months.
I'd be willing to do that. I think it's probably wise. Yes, I'll be willing to make that change.
Second.
You're okay on that?
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any other motions? Deanna, Greg?
No.
Okay. Jared?
Right notes. Um, I, I do have one addition to the actual resolution and recital, one of the wheresses. We left out the public hearing tonight, so we'll just add notification in there that we had public hearing tonight and received testimony both pro and con. Um, so to clarify, the approval is to, the motion is to adopt resolution two thousand thirteen thirty-two sixty-one with the amendments made on the floor. And again, for the benefit of all, that is fifteen events, including city events. Uh, no interior music after twelve midnight.
On the special.
Amplifier.
Amplifier.
No interior amplified music.
After midnight on the special event nights.
On the special event nights.
Correct.
And then the six-month review.
Correct.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Barnett?
Did you have a question?
Councilman Fessenelli?
That's okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes. Thank you, guys. Why, we um, we worked that one over. Thank you all on that one. Alright, um, we now move the, to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff or public may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar or pull an item?
I'd like to pull seven, nine, ten and eleven.
Seven, nine, ten and eleven. Alright.
I don't remember why, it wasn't a big deal.
I'd like to pull five.
Number five.
Yes, me too.
And um. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I wouldn't pull five, but Deanna's going to do it.
Okay, Deanna beat you. Deborah?
Well, they've pretty much covered it all, but uh, they, I would have pulled two of those anyway, so um, I'll be happy to.
They're already polled.
I know.
Okay.
I'll be happy to move the balance though.
Okay.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second to move the balance. Um, Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Fessenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Barnett?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, item seven, please.
Okay.
Five. I thought five.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deanna, you did pull item five.
On five, you know what, it's on, yeah, on the minutes. Let's see, let's go to, they're not.
They're not accurate.
Let's go to November, it's November nineteenth under new business number seven. It says here, Councilman Mills, he is in favor of making permanently locked gates at entrances to allow city access when it is needed. And I don't believe that was, that was correct. Because we were, Councilman Mills and myself were so adamantly against those gates.
That is not accurate at all.
We were adamantly against putting the gates in, so.
Would you, would you double check that?
Uh, our management intern put these together and actually listened to the entire video. Um, I'll, I'll confirm and make that correction if needed.
That's, that, it's, that did not happen.
That's why I pulled that. Any clarification?
And I had made some corrections earlier in the day on the same month on item eleven. Uh, I actually am the one who suggested researching coin and council member Mills concurred that he thought that was a good idea, citizens, uh, open negotiations. And then um, my first name was misspelled by Amanda. So when I write her Christmas card, it's going to be amazing how I spell her first name.
Excuse me, Jared, there was one more and I'm sorry I had it circled here. Number nine?
Under, still November?
Let's see, no, we are back now on Oc- on October twenty-second. Again, it's on the closure of the block wall along Finch- Ranch. It says here that we were all in agreement for put, installing a fence. I'm a little confused here because I thought we voted no against on this also. What do you, do you remember, Greg? Do you have it in front of you?
No, I don't.
Item number nine.
I'll clarify that and make a question.
If you can clarify that again.
Yeah, the, the minutes are a little messy.
The third page of the minutes.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, so Jared, you're going to go back and confirm that?
Thank you.
So do you want a motion at this point? Are you going to go, confirm it and bring it back to us or what do you want to do?
We'll bring it back.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to items seven.
Um, seven, who pulled that?
Okay. I have a question here, I guess. We've got, we've got the approval of this coming year's council meeting schedule on here. And a comment had been made to me the other day regarding potentially resetting these council meetings to six-thirty instead of seven with a little history that it had been six, then six-thirty and then seven. And frankly, that made sense to me. And it might get us out of here a little earlier, it's not that early. I thought it wasn't a bad idea, however, obviously it would have to be agendized. But I'm curious here, since we already have this on the agenda, could we switch it to six-thirty in the context of this noticed item regarding settings? Or would it have to be specifically disclosed that proposal?
Uh, the matter isn't, there's no resolution right now, so we'd have to bring it back to resolution because we'd be amending a pre-existing resolution. So we'd have to bring it back, but it's something we can certainly bring it back.
I mean, I just noticed, Andrew, it says the council approved, recommended the council approve the schedule of meetings as stated in this staff report. So haven't we given notice that we're dealing with this issue and we?
Right, it's just that you'll, the second sentence in the background, the most current resolution establishes the time. So you're going to be amending the resol- that resolution. And that resolution hasn't been agendized, so that's the formal action that needs to be taken. Understand that it's, you know, yeah, it's very, it's splitting hairs a little, but technically it would be appropriate.
You gave in for me on the gates, which I think now may prove to have been a good move. So I'm not going to beat anybody up on this, but I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to agendize that and let us consider the six-thirty. So I would propose we get that on the next agenda and we can talk about it. So that was my number seven.
Um, I have something on number seven if you're done with it. Uh, in addition, I concur with that. I talked to Jared about agenda, you know, making it at six-thirty. Um, I just wanted to bring it up, uh, the budget study session, which is scheduled for June tenth. Um, that's a date that I won't be able to make. I wasn't able to make it last year either and it was that same date. After that, it'll be fine, so I'm not asking you to change it. But if it can be changed, that would be great. If not, then I'll have my private budget session with Michelle again. Prior to that. But I just want to make sure everyone knows that date, yes.
It's usually that two, two Tuesdays prior, but I'd be willing to move it if we need to. Are you going to be out of town for the whole week or just?
Uh, that is the last sixth-grade Disneyland trip that I have to attend to.
We've got to bring it back anyways.
That's okay. And I have no problem with going, you know, with having my meeting with Michelle again.
Yeah, I think we should move that as well.
We don't have to bring the meeting schedule back. All we have to bring back is the, just the time designation.
Oh, I see.
Um, we can, we can move this, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday.
Yeah, we can always change it. That's, what we're doing right now is we're looking at setting the meeting calendar. The resolution, and it's never come before this council under its current, it's a, it's a resolution that kind of sets the structure of the order of council meetings, uh, what time we meet. We could even change the day that we meet. There are a lot of things we could change. We could decide that we're going to flip everything around and have all public hearings at the end of the meeting. All of that is part of that resolution. That's never really been considered by this new council. So it's a good thing to bring it back. But all we're doing right now is setting this calendar for the coming year. And if you know you can't be there on the tenth and it's, I think, an important meeting, um, I'd be willing to, let's look at changing it. I've got my calendar in front of me. Does everybody have their calendar in front of them?
My only recommendation is that we uh, try not to push it closer to the twenty-fourth because there are often several changes that Michelle needs to work through the document. So before the tenth would be ideal for us.
Do it on the ninth.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do it on the ninth?
We do Monday the ninth?
I'm fine with Monday the ninth if everyone else is.
With the foundation meeting, second Monday of every month.
Well, well.
We can kick the foundation out.
We certainly can.
We'll go in the other room.
Take it in the back room. That's fine.
So move it to the ninth? I mean, honestly, it's, it's an important meeting, we should all be there if we can.
What do we just move here?
That's fine.
So are we, are we done?
Alright, so we got that and um, Jared, you're going to bring this back next month and look at six-thirty start time.
We'll approve the calendar tonight. The schedule, and then next month, we'll bring an item for the six-thirty start time.
Okay.
A voice vote, it's all that is required on that.
That means you can start at February eighth, six-thirty.
No, the tenth, the June tenth is going to be on the ninth.
Oh, the budget.
Yeah, June tenth will be on the ninth. And we're going to bring this back at next meeting to talk about moving close sessions at six.
We're not bringing the calendar back.
No, I know, we're bringing the time back.
No, the resolution is different from setting the calendar.
No, I understand that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we're just discussing the whole thing.
We've made one change to the calendar.
Right, we're going to voice vote that. And we're going to bring back the time.
Yeah, well, agendize a matter for the time.
Okay, great.
So can I get a voice vote for the date change from the tenth to the ninth in June? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, alright, I think we're good on seven. Yeah, thank you all, it's a good idea, Rick. Uh, item nine.
Yeah, I, I just pulled this because I've.
I thought item, was item eight, eight, was item eight pulled?
Uh, I think it was seven, nine, ten, eleven?
Yeah.
Oh, eight never got pulled?
No.
Oh, shoot.
Alright, item nine, Rick.
The, I, I, I asked Jared to put this on because, you know, I've been presented a couple of times with a, with a ten thousand dollar check for his education expense. And I, we clearly approved ten thousand dollar uh, forgiven, forgivable loan for his education expense. And I commenced to sign it and then thought about it and the provision's kind of vague. It says it's for education. So I didn't really know whether I needed to write the check directly or whether I needed to have some evidence that it was, that it was going there or some confirmation or what the deal was. So I suggested he go ahead and agendize it so we could just look at those issues. There's no question, he's entitled to the ten thousand dollars educational money and I certainly don't have any problem signing the check. But I just want to point out to council or to the council that, uh, you know, we did it for education. So whatever council's comfortable with in terms of evidence of that or confirmation, non-confirmation, if you just want to cut the check and say, here it is, uh, you know, I think just a council issue for discussion. And so with that, I'll shut up and let somebody else talk.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with the contract, the way it was written. And it, he's given us the proof of that. Now he gets to get his check. I mean, he's not, not going out shopping, he's going to school.
Yep. Alright, any other questions or comments?
I just was chatting with him today about how fun it's going to be, a fairly new city manager, fairly new husband, brand-new father, going for your MBA.
Lot of stuff, yeah.
It's a good thing you're only thirty. Uh, you can do this.
Baby anyway, so.
You could be up studying and holding the baby. Um, anyway, congratulations for starting on your MBA. I think you're going to do a great job. You've got a great future ahead of you, I truly believe that.
Appreciate it. Greg, any comments?
Greg's deep in study there, he's being diligent. Okay, so I can go ahead and sign this check, everyone?
I've reread uh, the situation here and it looks okay to myself as well.
That's what we agreed on.
I'm glad you brought it back so we could re-review it, make sure it's all good. It is a large check to sign, you want to make sure you're doing the right thing, so I'm good with it and I'm glad you brought it back.
Yeah, I just didn't feel any discretion as the, as the finance chair to make discretionary, I'll sign the check, so.
You want to make sure it's right. Is that a motion on this item?
Yeah, I don't know, do we need a motion?
Yeah, of course, this one is, it's really something.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, Jared, we got a motion and a second?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the maker's motion.
Greg?
Uh, thank you, Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Fessenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Your pro number nine?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
I'll sign the next one.
Uh, item ten, Rick.
Item ten. Oh, uh, this was records discretion. The, the only question I had, I flipped through this, let me see if I can find that part since it's not tabbed. Um, there was destruction of checkbook records, et cetera, and it was, you know, like two thousand eight, nine, ten, et cetera. And, you know, I don't know whether we have electronic images or electronic records, but I just thought we should give some consideration as to whether they're going to dump financials and checking records for, you know, two thousand eight, nine, I could take a look here and see what it was, with no, no record of it. So I guess really I had a question, we destroy these paper records, do we have electronic records of those?
We have electronic records of every single city council agenda packet. Um, all the minutes, all the resolutions, all the ordinances. I'll have to refer to Michelle on this one with regards to the check receipts.
Let me tell you, I, I made a list.
We do have, we do have electronic records and not, not to mention we have our financials backed up um, every day. So um, we have all documentation that is scanned in on my financials um, backed up. So what, according to, we, we go along with the state mandated um, records retention plan. And what is required to be maintained in a hard copy is um, it's usually like audit year plus four years. So after the audit has been, like our fiscal year ends in June. So June two thousand eight plus four years means that it could be destroyed in the fiscal year following twenty-twelve, which is twenty-thirteen. So um, that's, that's the theory that goes behind it. But we have documentation of um, in our general ledger of all that has gone out, all that has come in, the detail. So we do have all that backed up. So it's an electronic version offsite along with, you know.
Here, here's the ones I had specifically and I'll tell you why I brought them up. I had general correspondence, anything prior to two thousand ten could be destroyed. Cash receipts and deposit slips prior to two thousand eight. Check registers um, for, looks like, looks like uh, two thousand seven and eight would be destroyed. And check registers down below uh, July through November two thousand seven. And the, and if it's backed up somewhere, that's fine. The only reason I brought that up is because, you know, sometimes things happen on city stuff and then you got to go back and look and say, oh my God, what happened here?
Right.
And this stuff is only four or five, you know, this is prior to two thousand ten. It's, it's two thousand eight, two thousand seven, it was only a few years ago. And, you know, if we did have some scandal or something and we've got no records, I mean, if it's electronic, that's fine, at least we've got it. But I'm just wondering, you look at some of the problems where the city's had, or we get an audit issue and geez, how far back does this problem go? And we don't have even red, check registers or anything. So if it's backed up, I don't care. If it's not, I thought we should consider it. That's not very long ago if a problem were to pop up.
No.
But it is backed up. It's scanned, it's scanned in and they're there, so we can, you know, we can print them.
So all this stuff that we were destroying, we do have solid electronic copies.
They have electronic copy and a backed up copy to you, right, with both?
Well, yeah, the electronic copy is backed up, yeah. Um, what is the, what is the statute of limitations, do you have? Okay.
So the statute of limitations on, you know, obvi, can vary depending on what claim is being made against the city. And as I was explaining to Jared, even in the event that the statute of limitations has run, if someone's alleged, for example, they want, uh, they want a refund on some assessment that they paid for the last twenty years. That is beyond the statute of limitations. They would still make that claim in the, in their complaint that they file in court and it was subject, it could be subject to discovery while we argue about whether the statute of limitations apply. So, I mean theoretically, these documents could be legally relevant in a lawsuit somewhere down the road. But you've authorized a records retention policy and, which is a legal document, it's authorized by the government code. So it's permissible to authorize the destruction of these documents without fear of some sort of retribution, um, against the city in the event that some, you know, unexpected lawsuit comes up.
I'm not worried about that. That, that wasn't an issue I was even thinking about. I was more concerned about the fact that if something were to come up, we found out there was some problems, there was some improprieties in the city maybe, we had a problem employee. And then we wonder and we go back to see how far back this went, because I get it in the office all the time. And we go back and it's, oh my gosh, it, we're having with the fire authority right now on the hazardous materials problem that you've all read about in the paper, okay? We've gone back X years and we got people screaming, hey, there's problems beyond that. Yeah, but we don't really have the records, okay? So my concern is, it's not that big a burden. We're ditching stuff that's pretty recent, two thousand eight and some of this two thousand nine. As long as there's, as long as material's available in some form, I don't care. But that's not that far back. And, you know, if something comes up, you may want to look at it, not for a lawsuit, not for a lawsuit, but to see what happened. We had a problem or want to do statistical tracking, want to check something, that's pretty recent stuff. If it's backed up electronically, I don't care.
It's, it's backed up. Now, um, how much detail do you want? You know, we have, um, we have the check register and we, we have like the most pertinent information, um, scanned. However, there could be additional information, um, notes taken or whatnot on a deposit or written, I mean, how detail you want to go, if you want to extend? I mean, we have that right, we just adopted the state's re, rent, retention policy. But we could be more stringent, like just like our investment policy, we have it more stringent than what, you know, the government code allows. But, I mean, that's a, that's a council, um, policy, so if you would like, we can hold stuff longer.
I mean, here's my gut feeling.
How much detail is lost, Michelle, between the original document and the backup? Because it sounded like you mentioned some of the detail could be lost.
I, I mean, I, specifically, I, I mean, I, I can't.
It's not, I mean, if your business license is a receipt for a hundred and seven dollars. And it's, you know, maybe a check for ten thousand dollars, um, for tree trimming, you know, that's coded to three or four separate accounts, there's, there's more notes on that one.
Let me see if I understand this.
This is our account payable record.
What we're going to keep is the electronic record of the amounts and, and, and the, and the tracking to the accounts. What we're going to lose is the paper copy, so if somebody wrote a notation on the check or something like that, we're not going to have.
Right.
We're going to have the financial data and the money flow, we're not going to have the documents with notation. So my personal feeling is, I think we ought to have that stuff for five years.
Five years has always been a standard that I've accepted in my own.
Especially if we lose the detail of the handwritten notes or something like that.
I'd like to see, the, the computers can store this stuff forever because the cost is nothing and the, and the ability to store expands faster than we can.
Why can't we scan the details and put that part there?
But all of this is, like, you're, you're talking about stuff from two thousand and eight. I know it's really hard to believe, but like, it's almost, it's almost two thousand fourteen. So we actually are at that five-year marker. The only one that concerned me and I called Jared about it was anything having to do with Norris Repke. Because there's the potential, I always feel that there's a potential for that to perhaps rear its ugly head again. And he has assured me that anything that might be pertaining to the topic we discussed has all been stored in a separate file. So I'm.
Who was that? I, I didn't.
Norris Repke, our prior engineers.
Okay.
There are two items there nor, and he assured me that those were just, um.
Monthly.
Yeah, so it, so I'm fine with that. Um, I'm actually fine with this because, Rick, it's twenty fourteen, so your five-year, other than general correspondence.
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion would be, and, and you're right, it does, it's a five-year mark. My suggestion would be that we hang on to records for five years.
Which is what we're doing.
Okay, that's fine. And with regard to financial, that we maintain the electronic records somewhat indefinitely because the cost is nothing to put them on a disk.
What we do.
Well, are you saying, um, scan all of the?
There's two separate ways. It's, it's taking your check registers which you sign and, and all the, the verification. We'd actually have to physically scan that into the system. Or it's what Michelle does, she punches in the numbers and it looks like, you know, item number three in our, in our agenda packet here.
Right, and that's, and this, the data, this data here is maintained, we could keep that indefinitely for no cost.
Which we currently do.
That's my suggestion. This stuff we just maintain indefinitely. The paper hard copy stuff, we pitch it five years.
But we do keep it indefinitely.
That's what we're, that's our current practice.
That's what we currently do.
That's fine, that's fine. And that complies with the state regulations, right? It, it more than complies.
More than complies.
We do this every year, we do this every year. And I remember the first time that I went through this, I was like freaking out. It's like, what, you can't throw all this stuff away? But, uh, so it's a, it's proper for him to ask these questions.
Now it's clarified, it's all good.
Yeah, it's good. So, can we dispense with it now?
Yep, I, I would move that one.
Good.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on item ten, Jared?
Uh, yes, thank you for your share. Chair of the number ten, Barnett.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes, thank you. Item eleven, Rick.
I'm up again, boy, I'm dragging this out, this is really unusual. Uh, this, I believe, I just had a question, I think this, oh yeah, this is the turn. Uh, I just kind of wanted to get a quick synopsis from somebody as to what was going on with this right turn issue from Cotella to, to Center.
Well, what happens is when the, okay, when the cars are coming towards Villa Park Elementary, yes, you're supposed to stop at the red light and not turn till people are out of the crosswalk. Well, that's not happening. So if you go to a lot of other cities, you'll see the sign that says, actually, in Orange House quite a bit, that says, no right turn on a red light when children are present. It's quite common, um, to do that. That way they don't end up, the car doesn't end up in the middle of the crosswalk, you know, because it's, and you've got kids walking across the street. And that's all it is.
So it's a flow and safety issue?
That's all it is.
Okay, that took care of my.
There's another issue of people blocking the intersection when they're coming south on Center.
That's right.
No one can cross and then they're in the middle of Villa Park Road. That's the other issue. This, this doesn't allow the people traveling east on Villa Park Road to turn right on red, period during school hours, basically.
Right, and that's what, that Jared and I spoke about this earlier. Things have changed down there since Villa Park Elementary School has changed its drop-off and pickup. And you'll now have a lot of cars lined, maybe a lot, I've seen eleven fifteen of them lined up down Villa Park Road when it's time for school to get out is when I've seen it. And, you know, the rest of the parents are lined up, but they're lined up along the side of Center, so you can actually drive through there if you want to, which is a huge improvement. My question, as I'm looking at this resolution, is it saying no turn on red when children are present? Well, where they would be seeing this sign, there aren't going to be children present, you'll never know if they're present on Villa Park Road, they're not. They're not even present on Center until you get about to the chain link fence. So I don't know that this sign is going to do what we want it to do. And I was asking him earlier if there were options for verbiage that were still legally permissible.
It's something that we discussed today and, and give, I mean, this correlates directly with another item on the agenda with regards to the crossing guard. And since there are so few children that do cross the street, rather than when children are present, we can limit it to, uh, time restrictions. No right turn on red during, you know, morning, school hour, seven to nine and then two to three or seven to eight or one to three.
And I think that's, I think that's what you need to do in order to accomplish what you're trying to do here.
It would probably have to be during school hours because as we, as we all know, the school changes its hours yearly. And we have different hours on Monday and Tuesday and different hours on Wednesday. And then we have half days, six days out of the month in October. So during school hours and, I mean, it works everywhere else.
I think that's fine. I, I would be willing to go with that, no turn on red during school hours.
Rather than during school hours because you, you don't know when they are. Well, one caveat, I'd say seven AM to three PM.
That's fine.
Oh, no, seven to, what are you going to do then, seven to three, that's gonna, that, there, what are you going to do for the block that they're in there?
We bought into your deal, I'm moving.
What are you talking about?
You're, we, we, we're, we're going with, we're going, we're, I think we're proposing to go with it as it's written. And I think you were expressing concern over time constraints on it. The motion is to move it as is without the time constraints as I presume.
Just no turn on red, period?
No, no turn on red when children, when they're present. I mean, you see it all.
You don't see the children, that's my point.
But you know what, it is what it is, somebody wants to argue about it, I, I agree. I mean, I think Deanna said that it's all over the place that way and it seems to function and it's not practical. You can't put a whole list of times and dates on the sign.
We don't want to do that. We don't want to do that.
You can't put times and dates.
No, so what are you going to do? It's about all you can really do.
I don't think we should put a time on it. I don't, I don't think there should be a time, I think it should be during, during school, you know.
Yeah, no time.
Yeah, no time.
Because actually, the most of the folks that are going to be affected are the people turning right to go, come and get their kids. They know school's in session and it's time to pick them up or drop them off.
I don't know what else you're going to do.
But the problem is there are no children present anywhere near that corner. Maybe ten of them.
Yeah, it was really five, yeah.
Maybe ten of them, but there are none and, and there must be, present where?
Well, that's why I can't, just use the words, use.
I really think that we need to look at the word.
Signs within the city.
We need to look at the verbiage so that we accomplish what we're accomplishing.
You don't put the hour, you put the words, during school hours.
Why don't we ask our, our, uh, city attorney what she thinks?
I'm actually trying to, is the intent of during school hours to prevent right turns when school is come, going into session and leaving? Or, because saying during school hours would technically prohibit you from turning right during like the lunch hour.
Yes.
Because of the way that it's phrased.
Right.
And so it has the same effect as Jared's proposal of like seven AM till whatever.
You don't know when school ends, you're blocking the whole day basically.
If you're, if the goal is when children are present, I, I think that's why that language is often used, um.
But you do understand about the physical setup there. Villa Park Road, there are no children present.
I certainly understand that.
And during a good portion of Center, there are no children present. Is there a legal parameter of how many, you know, feet? I mean, if, if it was, if it were near Villa Park Elementary School, I could see that that would work.
Right.
But it's not.
Yeah, I mean, we're obviously limited by what you can put on a sign.
Right.
Right? So it, it, we could consider the time period again, set, you know, seven AM till eight AM.
Well, we needed to stand up, we needed to stand up. If our, if our sheriff is ticketing and it doesn't stand up, and they say there were no children present, I was in Villa Park Road, there wasn't a single kid.
Sure.
Then, you know, it's not going to stand up. So our objective is to accomplish something and to have it stand up if we need to enforce it, right?
Let me give you a little background, this came from the principal and the school committee meetings, and it came from them. Do I actually think this is going to stop anybody or, no, it's not going to, it's just more of a deterrent, you know, that people see it and will slow down. Um, what's going to stop them is the officer sitting there when they go through the red light and giving them a ticket. But I think it's, I mean, I don't care if there's a sign there or not, quite frankly. If we enforce people running through the red light, that's good enough for me. So, I mean, if we can.
Word spreads fast.
Yeah.
Did Akram review this or is not, not necessary for him to review it?
Good question.
Akram, Akram reviewed it, he's in favor of it, I, I mean, it's just a matter of the language.
Does he feel it will do any good? I mean, we're spending a little money on it, do we, you know?
It, it will, because right now people will.
Well, inch forward when they're making that turn, uh, heading east on Villa Park Road, making that turn south onto Center Drive. Folks will actually inch forward and cut other people off who are trying to go south through the intersection or actually make a left on it. So this, yes, it will prevent cars, or it will actually have cars stack up on Villa Park Road. But it will actually allow more cars through coming from the opposite direction.
Yeah.
So that's the issue, is to stop them from inching out, jamming Center?
Because when the light turns green, when the light turns green, you can't get through. I mean, I've experienced it, I tend to drive through there on purpose to see what's happening. And, uh, you have, if you're lucky, you can kind of scooch over into what is actually the left turn lane on Center to continue on. But if, if something was there to stop them from trying to get through, even though they're not going to go anywhere, but maybe six inches or, you know, foot. But, but my concern is that the way this is worded, it can't really be enforced. And I don't like to pass laws that we have no intention of enforcing.
That was one of Akram's, uh, concerns. Is they like the hours. The engineers like the hours because they're concrete.
Well, then it's enforceable, but it's tough with hours.
Seven to three is more enforceable than when children are present because you have to, you know, prove something, it's, it's rather vague.
We know when most of them are there, right, it's typically between these in the morning and the afternoon.
Oh, you know what, this, the school schedules are really.
They have early out day.
Really is awful. So I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to burden the residents saying that all day you can't turn right on red. That would just, that would be not good. I mean, at that point, then just don't put the sign up.
Do we need to have any sign?
To be honest with you, just don't put the sign up. We're, we've already gone to strict enforcement.
Yeah.
That's what these will be on.
No, don't put a sign up.
Traffic signal.
Don't put one up.
On the traffic signal.
I'd hate to see times on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It would be on the traffic signal.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so before everyone can see.
Yeah, it has to be enforceable if we're going to put it up, otherwise, I mean, I will say, when there are signs like that, i- it makes me double think and I stop and look at it and I analyze it. So it would, it, you're not going to stop everyone, but it would help. But it's, if it's not enforceable, why put it up?
Yeah.
We have three turn limitations in the city. On the morning, coming from Cannon to Loma, uh, north and south, so there's one and two. And then there's no right turn period on Lemon Street South to Villa Park Road. Right by the first wall sign that we, that we updated. There's no right turn on red, period.
Going west on, going west on Villa Park Road.
And then, is, is that orange that put up the sign that said no right turn on red by the high school there at Taft and, uh, Santiago, is that oranges? And that really helps and they, you know, but they have kids present, they could have probably just used when kids are present and it would have worked just fine, because you can see the kids there.
If it's not enforceable, I have to, I'm not in favor of actually putting a sign up.
Yeah, I don't really like that either.
At that point, I mean.
It's enforceable, I mean, e- everything's enforceable.
It's, it's, it's enforceable to use the language when children are present. I think that Councilwoman Polly's concern is that in this particular location, there are unique circumstances that would make it difficult to determine if children are present. And so there's like a vagueness concern with this particular sign. But it is certainly enforceable as a general rule to say when children are present. And, you know, for example, there's, when I drive by my house, there's a no right turn when children are present sign. And there is a chain link fence, which is the playground is on the other side. So when kids are playing on the playground is, I seriously, I mean, is it enforceable at that moment? And I think that the clear intent is no, it's not enforceable at that moment, they're behind a fence.
But it makes you think.
But it does make you think.
Which is part of the reason for having this thing.
What if we just put do not block intersection? I mean, seriously, would that make them slow down and think about it a little bit?
No.
Then why don't we put the other one up and just don't enforce it? Let's just put it up and then enforce it then.
Why, would you put a bunch of signs up in our city that you don't intend?
Unless it's blatant.
Okay.
I'd say put it as, put it as his, and if it's enforceable when children are present.
That's what I'm saying.
It's going to make them think, just put it up like that and be done with it.
Just don't enforce it unless it's blatant, so that there's not a big argument about who saw what.
I can't, I can't support that. That's just silly. Would you like to weigh in? That's a good question.
I would say, um, I think there, enforcement has to go along with the sign. Uh, you could mitigate this whole issue by, uh, having my deputies go out there and write tickets to people blocking intersections, you don't need a sign for that.
Let's just, why don't we try that? Why don't we just, because as.
We're on strict enforcement right now.
Because as Brad said, word spreads fast. All you need to do is give about four or five tickets and the mom, the mom chain goes and, God, quit doing that. It's true.
And we did discuss that right when school gets back into session, you know, if it has already started, but we will be, uh, more visible, uh, January.
And I appreciate that and word did spread very quickly. They did see you all, all over the vice.
So we don't need to take any kind of an action at all, we're taking no action on this item.
Well.
Do we have to, we have to dispense of it in some way, then I'm going to move that we, we table, table, uh, resolution number twenty thirteen.
I second that.
All right, good.
All right, Jared. So tabling it is just getting rid of it.
Oh, getting, is that correct?
It's really comes up, if we bring it up again for a reason, we can do that. Okay, all in favor to table the matter, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Item thirteen, new business. This is a matter to consider in agreement with Help My Community for Business License Discovery and Compliance Services. Jared and Michelle, do you have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, yes, this was a, um, a business license discovery plan, which basically does not, as I wrote in the staff report, it does not, um, have any adverse effect on our current business owners. What it is trying to do is businesses that are coming in and doing services and advertising, I'm a Villa Park business, you know, representative, I work in Villa Park because our community is so, um, recognizable and has a good name and people would like to use it to, um, market their own business. So what this, um, company does, and the beauty of this company right now, is that it is a free service to the city. So basically, um, we sign a contract of, a three-year contract with them. And they have a software and it is the first software that's out there right now that we are aware of, um, that actually goes through the, the web. And anytime it says Villa Park, the city Villa Park, you know, we've, we, we do business there. What their service does is contacts them, says, oh, you do service in Villa Park, tell me about that. And once they say, oh yeah, we totally do service in Villa Park, like, okay. Then they give the information to us, we send them a letter saying, you do service in Villa Park. No, we don't do that. Well, you advertise on your website that you do service. So if you're going to do service, you know, we require a business license and if you continue to do it. So it's just, basically, they do the research, their software does the research, and then they let us know. Once they let us know, part of the contract states is that it's, they get, the benefit for them is that they get 30% of the revenue for three years. So it is truly found money because our city staff, we do not have the time right now. It's basically, you know, good citizens coming in saying, "I'm doing business in your city. I'd like to pay my business license." So this is basically a win-win for us. We don't have to do the legwork. They, what will occur is they will send the informa, the letter will be sent by Help My Community. And it will have their logo on it or whatnot, and they'll fill out the business application, send it in to us. Through that, we will also get a register from them saying, "These are the businesses that we contacted. These are the businesses that we are pursuing." Once we receive the money, we give them the 30%. So on one business license, it would be $75 for the city, $30 for them. $75, we don't do a thing. So it's a good potential. And based on their track record and some of the cities that I've spoken to, is that the first year, they, they get a big, a big reward is what I believe Adolanto told me, because what occurs is there's so many businesses in the surrounding area that we would never pursue. And just the letter stating, "Hey, you're late on your business license," or "You haven't done the business license," you know, official, people come in. And they're anticipating, they said they could at least double us, our business licenses in the first year based on the discovery of, I think they said, 23,000 businesses in the area that had some verbiage of Villa Park. They did a, just a snap, real quick estimate, so.
I have two questions.
So basically, they have, they said to send a letter out, right? That's how it starts.
Well, they actually call as well.
Uh huh.
They call, and then they send a letter. They send a first letter, and then we send a second letter. And depending on how the city wants to handle it, you can preserve, pursue further, which Jared and I spoke about. You know, we're, we're still gonna be a business-friendly community. We're.
But we don't have time to pursue that.
No, we're not gonna go hounding on everybody's door. However, I mean, the radar is up, you know, to know that this community, this business is within the city. And hopefully, we could do some.
So that's any business within the city and any business that serves the city, correct?
Any business that serves the city, anybody that does business within the walls of Villa Park.
Yeah.
Refresh my memory on what our annual revenue is.
About 35.
On business licenses straight?
35,000.
Okay. And you, when you were talking, I might have misheard you because I was trying to, did you say that you were sending the letters?
No.
They send the letters, because that's what I had read, that they send the letters. And we're giving them permission to use our city letterhead to send those letters. Okay, I wanted to show you.
And we generate the letter together. They've given me some samples and I've reviewed them. But, you know, once the contract is written, then we'll, we'll draft a letter to our liking.
Okay. And then you said the, that you've contacted other cities. Are those the ones that you are listed here that they've done business with in the past six months?
Yes. I mean, obviously Oakland's a little out of our league.
Yes, that's what.
That was the first one they gave me.
Contra Costa County isn't exactly a model for Villa Park either.
Well, one of the, one of the reasons why Jared and I both discussed pursuing it is because Todd worked with him in Adolanto. Adolanto, is that how you say it? Adolanto. I don't go there much. So having him, I've already reviewed it, and I had given him a contract as well to, to look at about six months ago, because they had come to us before they had a contract with them. And he was like, "Hey, you know, it looks legitimate. Let me do some more research. Let me find out," you know, on his end. And then, once he signed with him, he said, "Hey, you know what? It looks, it sounds legit, and we're gonna try it," and so.
I have a couple of other questions. Ensuring business with existing license, so the businesses that we already have businesses licensed for, they're not gonna get a cut into that, that found pool?
Nope.
Okay. I'm concerned about, are we gonna be targeting home businesses, home offices, consultants that have, you know, work out of their home, independent contractors that have a home office, you know, because we have a lot of people like that in our community. You know, they may have an off.
Need a business license.
So, so all of those then would be targeted as well?
That, according to our code, is that if you do any type of business in the city, then you are required to have a business license. And our business license is the smallest of any.
And that includes.
I know, I know.
That includes, if I'm correct, that includes, to make sure everyone understands, if you call out Sears to fix your washing machine, and Sears comes to Villa Park, Sears has to have a business license to do business in the city of Villa Park.
That's a lot of businesses.
Okay, so just to, and I had asked Jared for a listing, which was quite large, of the business license. And when I looked in there, I mean, yeah, you have Staples in there, you have UPS, you actually have the air conditioning companies. All of them have business license in there. So when you think of it like that, that's a lot of people. So. Make sure everyone understands that.
You have some other questions?
Well, I did have a couple of.
Let's open it up to the public if anyone has any thoughts or comments on this. Step up to the podium. If not, I'll bring it back to the council for final discussion.
I have a question for Michelle. Since you and Jennifer are contractors, do you have to have a business license?
I'm actually not a contractor, but yes, Jennifer does.
Jennifer does, none of us.
The contractors do, RJ Noble, Service Master, anybody who provides services.
And then anybody with a home business?
Anybody with a home business.
And does that mean they're selling something within Villa Park?
No, not necessarily. I mean, they could, they can be an insurance agent and operating out of their house. Some of the home businesses actually do not even make money. They still have to pay for the license. But for whatever reason, they have business which they operate under.
Don't make money, but you have a business? Hmm, that sounds like a bad business.
Sounds like too much government to me.
Yeah.
I mean, we can target whoever we want. I'm sure there's a lot of businesses outside the city that we can essentially make a priority one. And it will keep H, Help My Community fairly busy for the next couple of years, I'd imagine.
Is there a target for this, this potential funds? We have a target for this, this money?
A target?
Yeah.
It just go to the general fund, I imagine.
General fund?
It's general fund.
Yeah, it's standard.
It's just a new way for business to get more money.
What I envision happening is a lot of businesses, companies going to Ralph's, dropping off supplies, servicing the liquor store, servicing Rockwell's.
Yeah, see, every, yeah, all of those guys, we're just gonna be, wow, we've found money. We found a big bunch of money by tapping.
Well, I think it's also being fair to the people who are paying the business license.
I know other cities do this, you know. I do understand that.
If I'm paying my business license, I want my neighbor to pay their business license also. And I think that's the, that's the catch. One's being honest and one's not.
But I, I have a question. Is there, is there any kind of, there's no plan to fine these unlicensed businesses or retroactively?
It's not in our code.
Okay, because that's a concern. And, and I also am wondering what staff has done, you say nothing, to seek compliance without going, you know, out, out of, out of house.
No, you know, I used to follow, in the, in the back of the Orange City News, there's the fictitious business filings. I'd look at it every Thursday, well, now it comes out Wednesday, to see if there's a Villa Park fictitious filing. If there was, we'd send them a letter and say, "Hey, you need a business license. You're clearly operating business out of this address." For the solicitors permits, we get a lot of literature that has been dropped off at doorsteps. Residents will bring that in, give it to us, and we'll send them the licenses. But as for businesses, I mean, we, I don't Google businesses in Villa Park and see what names.
They're hidden, you don't know about them.
I just don't have the time, unfortunately, to do that.
Is there any other service that offers this? Any other company?
I'm sure there is.
Not that, not that I have researched that has the software that is going through the web. And that was, that was the key that was kind of interesting. It's a new.
Technology.
Yeah, new technology, if you will, new software avenue of pursuing people using, you know, your good name.
One of the things I would be, I, I'm cautious when it comes to this and knowing about the web. You look up my business, you're gonna see Villa Park. There is no business in Villa Park. That was our mailing address. And what happens is you get a business that will list, Villa Park will list Orange, the office is in Orange. Somehow or another, they got the mailing address for Villa Park, and I might get a notice. And I'm okay with that, because I'm gonna come, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come in here and I'm gonna explain it to you.
Yeah, that's all it takes.
I'm gonna, and I'm gonna do that.
You explain it.
And most people will.
Yeah.
Um, on the other hand, there are services that, and I wanna see if this company did that, that actually just cross-match with a fictitious business name, with a resale license, and do they do that or only do the web?
You know what? I, we haven't got into full detail, so, I mean, I will, that's a great question.
Because most cities, when they are a larger city, actually have a department where they just, they cross-reference.
Right.
That's how Orange cross-referenced. That's how they find people.
Right.
You file a fictitious business name, and boom, all of a sudden you get a letter that says you don't have a business permit.
I would imagine this company would use all the tricks in the book, because that's how they make money.
Yeah.
So they're gonna use all of those methods in order, they're shooting out a shotgun, and they want the most responses back because it gets them the most money. So, yeah, they'll do all that. I'm sure they would.
So even the UPS store, all the people that have their businesses that.
Po boxes.
Because that's, that's a lot.
The time how we identify those are counter visitors. They'll come into the counter with this puzzled look on their face and wonder where Orca Swim Club is. So, you know, it says it's at, you know, 17853107. Is there a dash, blank, blank, blank behind it? Yep, go to the PO box store, or go to UPS, it's PO box. So then, you know, what was that address again? And what was that business? We'll write it down, we'll send them a letter. Every PO box, half those PO boxes are businesses.
There must be probably 500 businesses in that UPS store.
Sure.
My other question is, has anyone contacted Michelle Steele's office of supportive equalization, that she's our rep? Just to find out, you know, about the concept, the company, is anybody just bothered to talk to them about that at all?
I haven't, no, I have not called.
It might be kind of interesting to see, you know, what they have to say about it. And the other question I have, at the bottom of this letter from Greg Meister, the VP, is that, is that how you say his name? Did I say it right? Is that how you say his name?
Junior.
Gregory Meister Junior, the VP Client Liaison. The last sign it says, "In addition," as he's telling us how great this is, "This will bring business to your city."
Really?
That's what it says. "And build your business base and influence growth." I really wanna know how that, how.
They'll find out how cheap our license is and wanna come here.
That's right. Yeah, it is cheap.
Okay.
Good answer, Jared. All right, what are we gonna do on this? Study her emotions?
Mr. Mayor?
I got a few quickies on this.
Okay.
Council already been through the agreement?
Yeah, I have a few, a few minor recommended changes largely relating to the way that the compensation is discussed. I would just, I would recommend that if you're gonna make a motion on this tonight, that you approve with Jared having the authority to make minor revisions as appropriate. Basically, I would want the compensation to say all collected revenues, so that we're not somehow on the hook for revenues that are found, but that for some reason we're not collected.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I also had a minor change to the indemnity agreement, the indemnity provision.
Is that 4.2? Because that, that whole paragraph kind of, that's confidentiality.
That's confidentiality. 4.2 is confidential information, but it actually exempts the city for any Public Records Act provisions, so.
Okay.
I mean, anything that we're required to provide in the California Public Record Act cannot be changed by this agreement. So, that won't change.
I just had never seen that in any of our contracts before, and I just kind of like, since I'm not an attorney.
But because it's the public rec, anything that is public records, state law would preempt the contract, so not a problem.
Okay.
How long after they collect the money do we get the money?
We collect the money.
We collect it.
And then we pay them.
You pay them, okay.
All of that, so I'm assuming then, under item two, three, and then perhaps under item five, those are where your, most of your changes are, under compensation, because that's where I had arrows and questions.
Two, three, five, and the addenda.
Okay, because that's where I had issues. Okay.
And they will have a business license too, correct?
I would like to double the license fees for businesses like this one.
So Jared, can you reiterate the changes so that we can identify those before we vote on this?
Sure.
Are we gonna vote on this, or are you gonna bring it back?
Or you can authorize me.
Yeah, let him do it, and let him.
Do it with the city attorney's office.
I, I feel comfortable with that. I'd make the motion.
I would too, but I would, I still have just a couple of quick observations.
Yeah, because I had problems with those two, two, three. Those are exactly where I had my problems on compensation.
Paragraph 5.1 on the term, it's got an auto renewal unless you give notice at least 60 days prior. I'm not big on auto renewals. I don't see why you have to have an auto renewal provision. I don't like those. They just tend to be hooked.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Gotcha.
Okay. Second, second item. As soon as we sign this the way it is, boom, cities is tied to these people for six years. And the reason it's six years is this, because it's a three-year contract, and then they flow the revenue for three years after that. So you're committed for three, and then in that last year, you've got three follow-on years with revenue. So as soon as you sign it, you're on it for six years. Just a thought, might wanna do a one-year trial on it and see how it goes. You might wanna think about doing that.
I am absolutely with you on that. 100%.
That makes sense.
I, I misread that. I thought this was only for three years.
It is for three years, but they get revenue for three-year holdover, so it's three plus three.
I assumed it was gonna be a one-year sweep, and then they were collecting for three years, so I mis, I misread that.
Three plus three, so.
I would agree with you on that.
Yeah, I agree too.
I could probably live with it, but it might be nice to try it and see what happens.
Yeah.
The last comment I have, I have a note here about whether it involves sales tax, but I understand this is strictly business license revenue. The last one I had, it's more really a thought for council. They're gonna take 30% of the revenue. Now, I hate the government taking revenue, so anything that increases the fees to people, I have problems with. But this city's pretty efficient, and the money we get, we pretty much use for the benefit of the city. It doesn't get wasted too much. So with that in mind, okay, the question that comes to me is, if they're gonna take 30%, do we wanna yield 30% of our revenue to ferret out people that should have done a license? Or do we wanna charge a 30% penalty or something like that?
No.
For people that didn't do it, and then give them the penalty and get our 100%?
No, see, that, no.
It's unfound revenue, though.
See, that was my whole question, the whole idea of planning to fine or, in some fashion, those unlicensed businesses that have been discovered. I am absolutely opposed to us doing that. Half the people don't know.
I'd prefer just to go with this, because it's unfound for, it's 70% new to us.
You're not gonna get an argument from me. You're kind of preaching the, that's why I preface that comment with the fact that I hate all these fees.
I know.
But I looked at it and said to myself.
No fines.
Should we bear the cost, or should they bear the cost?
We're not bearing the cost.
I understand, so that's fine. That's all I had.
Okay, so read it back how, how we're gonna do this, because I'm not quite certain what, what you're gonna be able to change, Jared.
No auto renew.
Uh, one-year term, no auto renewal, so it will be essentially a four-year agreement with the company. And then you'll authorize my secretary's office to come through the agreement.
And any area, modify any area where it is, HMC will only receive the collected money. So they can't identify a business, and that business never purchases that license. I'm not passing it through to them.
That makes sense.
So it's only the collected revenue.
Is there any retroactivity to these businesses?
It's not in our code.
Okay.
Then my question, I'm sorry, then under item five, where it's, where it's talking, this is still under compensation. I had a question where I just underlined item three, not to be considered a business that requires a license by the city.
Item five.
I'm under compensation, on page 10, you're gonna make modifications to item two and three on that, that makes sense. And then under item five, where it's talking about a 30-day warranty of information provided, I don't really quite understand what all that means. Will replace any lead provided to the city if the lead does not have the minimum information stated in purpose and scope, be out of business, not be considered a business that requires a license by the city. Does that mean that like, I mean, we've got a list of those businesses that are not considered businesses? That was my question, and that's why I started asking about, you know, if somebody has a home office, does, does that make them a business if it's not their primary office, but it's their home office? What's the list of those cities that are not considered a business that requires a license by the city?
I think that's gonna be in our discretion, not the.
Well, do we have a list? That's my question.
That's the thing, is how, I guess, how tight is our, I haven't.
That's my question.
What is a business? And that's a big issue, because you're gonna, I'm gonna take it back to the mailbox, et cetera, place, or the UPS place. You're gonna have 500 PO boxes. You're gonna get 500 letters that go out because they have a PO box in Villa Park.
Right.
But they live in Chino. You know, it could be some, and so we need to define what a business is.
That, that was my original question, is, is, you know.
If we don't have that definition, then we just found a little fault in our own.
Yeah, you're right. A lot of people, they, they will use the UPS box here in town because they don't want people at their house.
Exactly.
Where their real office is, or where they do, do their business out of.
You know, I, I mean, I.
But the letter goes out.
We need to have, we need to have that clear. I know, I should have probably asked you earlier, and I'd like to see that. I really would like to see that. I see Michelle's eyes get all excited. She's a finance director. There's money. Ooh, we're gonna get some more money. But, you know, you know, I just feel like we need to be sure we know what we're doing to people and who we're doing it to.
Well, if it's a business.
Really, don't you think?
I mean, really not changing anything. The law is the law. If they run, if they operate a business, they operate, we're not changing anything. If they come to us and prove to us that they don't have a real business here, we don't charge them. They're off the hook. And like Rick said, that we don't pay fees unless we get fees, so.
So who gets to be the person, staff is already pretty lean, that gets to handle all 500 people that come in that say?
You hope 500 come in. You, that'd be a good thing.
That say, you know, "I just have a post office box here. This isn't where my business is."
Go to the city, right there, 500. 1700 houses.
I mean, it's all, it's all in the books right there, what a business is.
You know, I think we, one of two things here. We either delegate it and let council and the city manager determine whether their changes are very materially from our instructions or the agreement. And if not, that they proceed with it.
Yep.
Alternatively, if they think there's material changes and they're uncomfortable, then they just bring us back to changes in the HMC.
That I feel about. And I, because you have changed the, you know, duration of the contract, I feel a little bit better about it.
Yeah, I do too.
But, yeah, if, that, that's good direction.
Can we change the term of the contract? Okay, okay.
You wanna make that motion? All right.
I'm moving.
I'm, yeah, we already got it?
Yeah, let's go.
Okay, Jared, got a motion in a second. I was reading, let me ask, Michelle, she wrote it down.
You just wait.
Brad, I wanted to clarify, you talked about sales tax revenue, the.
No, actually, Rick did.
Oh, Rick did.
No, actually Rick did, but go ahead.
The sale, that's not for us. What happens is when business permits, licenses are pulled, the county and the state actually find that, they will find that out and they will go after.
Yeah, they're good at that.
The sales tax revenue. Yeah, we don't have to do that. They take care of it.
All right.
Yep, they're good at that too.
But they're real hooked into those also though. The Board of Equalization is very hooked into these kinds of companies and it's, it's, it's good to just say, you know.
Yeah.
It's good to just put a phone call into staff, staff to staff.
Can I ask you to repeat the motion so I can write it down?
I move that we approve this item. With city manager and city council, spelled differently. To implement those changes we discussed and any other changes that they deem appropriate. And that if the changes they deem to be material, that they can then bring that back to council and outline the changes to us. We'll review it again. If they consider them to not be material changes, then they go ahead and proceed with the agreement.
Uh, maker of the motion is Mayor Proton Burnett, second. Counsel Mills. Mayor Proton Burnett.
Yes.
Counsel Mills.
Yes.
Counsel Fasenelli.
Yes.
Counsel Polly.
Yes.
Marys.
Yes. All right, thank you. Um, under new business, item fourteen is a matter to consider city hall public restroom improvements. Jared, do you have a report, please?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this item would authorize me to enter into contracts with our vendors for the improvements of our two public restrooms. The two public restroom service, city staff, city hall, uh, the library, the general public, anyone who rents this community room. Over the last few months, I've worked with some contractors, um, to go over the remodel. Uh, the first thing we did was, was survey the sewer lines to make sure they weren't cracked or leaking because of the awful smell that's in there. That is actually coming from our P-trap in the floor. Commercial restrooms are supposed to have a P-trap or a trap primer or a hose bib that's in there. We have a hose bib. We don't have a trap primer. The velocity, and it's too much information, the velocity of the toilet flush siphons out the P-trap primer, primer. So no water's in there and that's where the sewer's coming back up the smell. So, so that will be the most significant improvement that we all realize is the smell. Uh, other than that, we are going to demo it completely, bring it down to the studs. We don't know what's behind the wall. Um, so we'll have to see what, what's back there. They, they weren't remodeled. They were last remodeled in nineteen ninety-seven with the expansion of city hall. Um, we're just going to do a simple three-by-six subway tile. It'll last forever on the walls. Uh, we'll go up about four feet around the side, um, all new fixtures, all new furniture, um, stainless steel, brushed nickel, white porcelain toilets. It's all commercial grade.
Industrial, commercial.
Durable, blah, blah, blah. Automatic flush, automatic hand dryers to save on some paper towels, uh, automatic faucet on and off. Um, we'll repair the doors, have them looked at, maybe better locking mechanisms, uh, so you feel secure. I can tell you how many times folks have been walked in. On one of the updates that isn't in here, uh, would be a baby changing station, um, not only for me. Is the, the public library has their story time. Couple of the mothers from there have suggested that we look into it. So this will be to authorize me to, to get that work done with, with our vendors.
And seal the tile, right? And seal, seal, seal the grout. That's a big deal with, with the tile.
Absolutely.
All right, um, is there anyone here from the public like to speak to this? I don't see any, so I'll bring it back to council for any comments and/or a motion.
Uh, I have something to add to this. Um, I'm not sure how we're going to handle it. The foundation, we, Jared put in for a grant from the foundation for five thousand dollars. They came back and granted a thousand. It wasn't unanimous that they granted a thousand and, and one of the comments that was made by them, and I take, take to heart, was that when the people in Villa Park donated money to the foundation. They, I don't think the intent was to give the money to city hall to renovate a bathroom. So although the foundation did grant a thousand dollars, I'm making a recommendation or a motion that we not accept the thousand dollars. Because I just don't think it's right to accept a thousand dollars for the renovation, even though the foundation uses it and the public uses it. I think that they could take that thousand dollars and put it towards something else in Villa Park. They've been very generous in our city and use it towards something like that. So that's something I know that we have to vote on. Um, it's something that if we'd like to discuss, but I'd like to bring, bring that up and make a motion not to accept it.
Motion I would second.
Yeah, I would second it too.
That's well put, yeah.
Any other council comments?
No, I just want to make, I just want to make sure that who is going to be, uh, inspecting this?
I wonder.
Well, I mean, I bet, I mean, really, that this is, this is, we don't want to have to revisit this in a few years. And we don't want the contractor to gloss over it because I, I fear that too.
Yeah, he'll do great. No, no, it will be built, Jared. I've had some contractors who actually wanted to tile over the existing tile.
Oh, no.
See?
Buy that off anyways. That, that's not good.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, second.
We have two motions.
Okay, Jared.
Uh, the first motion I had actually was from Counsel Fasenelli, seconded by you, not to accept a thousand dollars and to approve the recommendation I stated seconded.
Okay.
Counsel Fasenelli.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Burnett.
Yes.
Counsel Polly.
Yes.
Counsel Mills.
Yes.
Marys.
Yes, thank you. Another item under new business, item fifteen, this is a matter to consider relocating the crossing guard at Center Drive and Villa Park Road.
Aren't we still on, do we do the?
Yeah, we got to the, we're to the other one.
Are we still on fourteen?
We just did it.
I thought we, I thought we just did.
We did both things. He rolled it.
Oh, we put them together?
They both together.
Yep, they rolled it together.
All right.
All right, so we are on fifteen and we're talking about relocating the crossing guard at Center Drive and Villa Park Road. Jared?
Uh, yes, this matter was brought up also during the city schools committee meeting and at the recommendation of Counsel Fasenelli, um, questioning the necessity for the crossing guard. Uh, we took a look at it. There's only a handful of kids, if that, who cross at this location. Thought is maybe the crossing guard could be best utilized elsewhere in the city. Um, we've discussed it with our chief police and our school resource officer. And probably the largest intersection is that of Taft Avenue Nichols, right in front of the high school. Because you get students going to and from Saravilla and to and from the high school. There's, there's a greater need for the services there. Uh, the, the location of the crossing guards is set by the city council and is your policy. So if you wish to relocate it, now's the time to do so.
Do we also recommend that the crossing guard has a whistle? Because of the high school, they will be busy.
They will be busy.
It's very, very busy there.
I have a suggestion on this. I suggest we defer this to CDC and the city manager and delegate that to them. I don't, unless they need to come back to council, it seems to me they're pretty competent to figure out where to put the crossing guard if there's a problem we can address.
We already addressed it really at CDC. This is all discussed in the same deal.
Jared said we needed to bring it to council to, to change it. I'm, I'm not sure why, but it's a council policy.
So.
Well, I'm, I'm good to support CDC though, if they've already done this.
You know, we talked, we talked to the sheriffs and everything, so I mean, I make a motion.
I move that we delegate that to CDC and city manager.
They've already done it.
Already done that. We've already done that. I have a question. Can I ask a question?
No, 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 we're going to make the motion, but they already have made the decision what they're recommending.
Oh, okay.
So we're just going to vote on it, so.
The way I understand this.
Yeah, yeah.
It's already been to CDC. You've talked with the sheriff's department, or sheriff's representative. Who else have you spoken with about this?
With the crossing guard.
With the crossing guard.
The crossing guard as well as the, um.
The what? Oh, the C, uh, uh, school resource officer. What about, um, the parents at the PFSO? Have you talked to them?
Yeah, I've talked to our home and school league president, which was, it wasn't ten, it was five people. And she parks her car over on Evergreen and she walks her three children across the street. So it's not even children walking. So she was part of the five and she completely understands it, spoke with her again, spoke with the school, spoke with the crossing guard on a good day, on a good warm summer day. Fifteen, maybe twenty people. And when you go over to the high school, everybody knows, I mean, you have hundreds and hundreds of kids going through those crosswalks. It's, it's just, it's just a number. It's a number thing and we don't have two crossing guards. We have one.
I, I just actually thought it was kind of an interesting idea when I, it's the first time anybody's thought about that, you know? But you're talking about the difference between six to eleven-year-olds versus twelve to eighteen-year-olds and, and I kind of, I, I'm not being funny when I say this. The respect level that high school kids are going to have toward the sweet little old lady that usually mans the crossing guard. Besides a whistle, there are a couple of other things she might want to have on her.
Bullhorn maybe.
I mean, I'm very sincere when I talk about that. There's already a light there and, and crosswalks. And I'm, I'm hopeful that by the time they're in high school, they can cross the street without getting themselves run over. That, that's just my thought.
I don't know if you know, but there's always, uh, there's, well, not always, but a good portion of the day, there is a sheriff that is parked there. Only for the purpose of making sure that the kids walk through the crosswalk, which they don't.
Right.
So here we have two sheriffs in the morning and one of them is just sitting there watching kids go through the crosswalk because we don't have a crossing guard.
Well, and you really think the sweet little old lady is going to be able to get them to do it when a guy with a Glock strapped to his side can't get him to do it? I don't know. It's just, I, I'm just being realistic.
I understand.
You know, um, my, I have a funding question on this. Does, can, can cops' funds be used to fund our crossing guard? Okay.
But.
I'm wondering if we should just do away with it all. Well, it might be interesting to move it and see what happens and if she.
That's the whole point because also that this also frees up the, the SRO to, to do other things too.
It might be interesting to try it. I would like to try a test period with it and bring it back and see what happens. I'd like to also have the crossing guard here and if she's not standing there crying, you know. Like, why don't we, I, I'm willing to test it. It's, it's the first time.
I think.
Yeah, that I would.
Exactly.
Because we can move her around. I mean, that's the whole thing.
My question is this.
Right.
The other place where the kids are a little bit younger, your middle school kids that are crossing right there at, at Nichols, not at Taft and Nichols, but, uh, Nichols and Serrano. That is a disaster. I don't know if that's gotten any better.
Well, I think, you know, we only have one, so let's start where the majority of the kids are. Let's see how it goes. It can be changed.
I'm willing to.
Right now, she's not being used.
You're, you're right, Deborah. That, that is also at Oakwood. There's a lot of U-turns right there at the stop sign. I mean, I, every time I drop my daughter off, there's three people that are behind me. And, uh, that's, that's, that's a lesser traffic area, so we'll move it around.
A lot of the problems there at that Nichols-Serrano area has to do with the kids not crossing all at the same time. So the parents can't get through. So if you had a crossing guard stopping the kids so that parents could go, 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 go. And then after she's got a good bundle of them, you know, going out and blocking the street and then getting the kids across and then stopping them again so that parents could go through. That's, that's, that's always been an issue where, you know, the light itself is what's going to stop and start the kids at the crosswalk. I mean, I'm assuming.
They go against the crosswalk.
So the crossing guard isn't going to work with the, with the lights, the existing lights?
Yeah, the kids are, they, they don't pay attention to this, to the sign that says walk.
And you're going to pay attention to grandma. I don't know.
Well, you know what? We're going to try, we have to try it.
For grandpa.
We have to try it.
Grandma, aunt.
They have a whistle.
You know, we're paying ten thousand dollars to have her in a street that doesn't have any kids.
You know, I, I, as we're thinking about this, I'm wondering if we can develop some type of three-month floating rotation where she bounces back and forth between Nichols and Taft and then Nichols and Serrano. I'm sure it can be arranged.
Well, let's see what she does. Let's, let's see what she does. She's been over here for a couple of years. I think we can give it till June at the high school with hundreds of kids.
I, I think it's good to test it. I think it's good to test it.
I agree, test it.
Let's move it.
All right, do we have a motion on this?
I make it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
And does that also bringing it back at the end of the school year?
We'll bring it back at the end of the school year in December to review.
In that case, I support it.
Can you add that to this then?
Yeah.
Motion and second, Jared.
Motion and second. Uh, roll call vote. Counsel Fasenelli?
Yes.
Counsel Mills?
Yes.
Counsel Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Burnett?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes, thank you very much.
You know, as an interim, just as an interim comment, I could. Is it really necessary for us to make fire and police sit through all this? I, you know.
They, um, they sit there at their own will, you know, if they need to leave, they can leave. Obviously, they're very interested in this discussion, right? This is, I'm surprised they don't have popcorn. I mean, this is.
I kind of like looking at somebody though, rather than just looking at empty chairs, guys. I mean, I like, thank you for staying.
Important for us to have law enforcement here, I do.
We're stuck here.
I think.
There's no handcuffs on these guys. They can walk right out the door.
Why do they have to sit here?
They don't.
I think it's important to have law enforcement here. I do.
You know, there they are. Okay.
I brought it up. I did my good deed. I couldn't, I had to throw that out.
All right. Um, item sixteen is this item regarding citywide Wi-Fi. This item, we all received a letter today from Wi-Fi Wireless addressed to Jared. And this letter was, um, kind of an interesting letter, kind of a surprise. Jared had requested from the president of the company, Mr. Gene Curcio, um, about some specifics. Like, let's have the engineering done, what poles are going to have antennas on them, have, let's see the agreements with Edison's, things of that nature. Jared and Gene had a discussion, uh, which I was not part of, but it apparently didn't go too well, as Jared, I'm sure, would mention to you. And Mr. Curcio, uh, sent that letter, I don't want to say out of haste, but, um, you know, apparently he was irritated. I did speak with him today. He was irritated and felt that he can't work under those conditions. Jared has authored a new letter from the city Villa Park going to them, basically addressing his letter. We all have a copy of that. I don't know if everyone's read it, basically saying, look, you know, the concept of having Wi-Fi in our city and all the residents having free internet at their home is wonderful, but we need more specifics. If you're willing to give us these specifics, we're willing to continue looking at it and talk more about it. Uh, I'm disappointed, uh, that this happened. Uh, it, it's very likely a showstopper based on that letter. I don't know what will happen when they get this letter from Villa Park, if they're going to come running back saying, okay, I don't know. I have no clue. So my thoughts would be let Jared send this letter to them and let's see if anything happens.
I, I think this, we just should just drop it.
I agree.
Like a hot rock. Just, just don't even bother with this man.
I agree.
He doesn't deserve a letter even in return.
I, I got to tell you.
I agree.
I had a note on mine, defer not ready for council, okay? The last meeting, I made up a punch list of about five items that I specifically approached him with, which were substantially the same as Jared's. Oh, we're going to take care of that right away, okay? I got a packet of nothing. I love the concept. I think it's a great idea.
I think everyone likes the concept.
Practically speaking, I'm, it's going to take a lot more wherewithal than those gentlemen appeared to have. And I think it's a waste of time at this point. They, it was just, it's this pie in the sky, a lot of promises, nothing came through. And I agree, just, just drop it. We're always here. If they want to come back, I'd love to have it, but I don't even think we waste our time. Because I think we're just creating more work for, for, for the city and there's just nothing here, okay?
Let's just move to vote on this.
I absolutely.
Let's, let's.
I absolutely, uh, you know, I spent the better part of yesterday, quite frankly, researching this company. Uh, rewatching the entire, uh, what, fifty minutes of the presentation with questions, writing down quotes and then going to, uh, I spoke with Lacey Kelly. Really, the presentation that this guy gave and he was talking as though, you know, they were working together. He was invited to give a presentation to their technology committee as a courtesy to a request by a mayor from a member city. That was Mayor, uh, uh, of Stanton, whom is your good friend.
David.
Shaver. So, um, she was very concerned that he was representing things as though, um, it was something that AOC OC was interested in, when that's not the case. I also spoke with the, uh, chair of the technology committee. He is, he is a guru. That's his whole deal. And, uh, it doesn't sound to me as though there, there are more questions than even we began to broach. Then we were very superficial in the questions. When he started laying out the types of questions that needed to be answered, I realized, oh my gosh, we are way far away from even looking at this. I also, one of the things he said when he was standing right in front of us was I already have the permits from Edison. I spent some time talking with, uh, Pat Butrus, who's our governmental representative. She said they would never give a blanket, you know, permit in that way, that they would come forward with specific poles that had to be identified. The fact that someone would stand here at that lectern and lie to us was very disturbing to me. I would never do business with someone like that. What also concerned me about the letter, I checked my email at eight and noon. So when I called Jared for our last conversation before tonight's meeting, he's the one that alerted me to the email. When I went to check the emails, like four thirty-five o'clock, it wasn't a letter from him. It was a letter from him through his attorney right away. That concerns me. My antenna go up hugely and everyone's antenna should go up. I will in no way, uh, uh, support authorizing our city manager to send something like this that's apologizing for doing his job, which is protecting our city.
I don't think it's an apology letter.
Oh, it certainly does look like it and it's an invitation to come back and I don't want him back. I don't want him to come back.
It's an invitation to provide what we've asked for that he didn't want to give us.
Nope.
We gave him that invitation before.
Nope.
He said, no problem on the performance bond. He hands us a contract, no performance bond, no reference to a perform. It was a joke. I mean, frankly, I just, it was, it's always.
When I got this package, when he said, oh, I'll send all that stuff to you, when I got it, I literally just sat there laughing. I didn't even respond. I just wrote received and, and because he requested that, I thought I can at least do that much. But there is. But there is nothing here. It's, it's beyond a bad idea for us to in any way open the door. And if anyone's going to respond, it better be our, our city attorney. Quite frankly.
Okay.
I say we, I say we stay back.
There's nothing there, I don't think. There's nothing there, you know?
Stay out.
People confront me, oh, what's going on with Villa Park and the Wi-Fi? And the answer, my answer was nothing, okay?
Well, I mean, we don't have all the specifics, that's for sure, of course.
We don't have anything. We're not even close.
It was a joke, so I.
Okay, let's, let's vote on it.
No, we'll, we'll move past this item, and if they come back to us, so be it. We will not send the letter.
Yeah, Jared was very diligent, and he got the same response that I did. Less respect from the other side.
So we're, we're making a motion to table this item?
Yep.
I will be glad to make that motion.
I'll second.
Do you need a vote on that, guys?
Uh, yes, motion, I'd like to.
I make that motion.
I second.
Okay, Jared?
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Fassinelli?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Barnett? Marys?
Yes. All right, item 17 is an item to appoint the city's representative to the Orange County Vector Control District Board of Trustees. Are there any nominations? I would nominate Mr. Mills.
Second?
Second, I guess.
There is a new FPPC procedure.
You can participate.
I'll have the city attorney discuss.
Okay.
This particular regulation has been of some concern over the last year. So the FPPC has very recently adopted a new procedure. It used to be that to avoid any conflict, the nominated person would leave the room. The FPPC has adopted new regulations that allow nominated person to stay in the room and to vote on the matter. But the city has to, under these regulations, post on its website a Form 806, which is an FPPC form, looks like most of their forms. It just identifies the person that's been appointed to the committee. And the reason we do this is because there is a stipend associated with the committee appointment, and that it is a, is a, an impact on financial and your personal finances. I know that in this particular scenario, it is $100 a meeting, but the FPPC regulation is $250 a year. So it's a very low bar. So in any event, we just sort of want to get it on the record that there is a stipend, $100 a meeting, but the nominated person may participate in the meeting.
Can I ask a question? Is it $100 per meeting? Because in, in the, in the narrative, it says $100 per month. Do you get paid with, if you, on those occasions where you can't attend?
No.
So it's actually per meeting?
You, you have to, you have to be there to be compensated.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're all that way, Deborah. It's sanitation, fire, you have to be there to get paid.
I do understand that, but when what's written.
You just asked a question. You must not understand that.
I do understand it, but when staff report conflicts with what I understand to be true, I think it's appropriate to ask a question. It could have changed.
Okay.
Things change all the time.
True.
Well, see, it's, it's in lieu of the travel expense, so if you don't go, then you don't get the money.
Exactly.
Oh, I see.
That's, that's how they kind of catch that.
Well, I've enjoyed your vector control reports.
Everybody loves my vector control reports.
All right, we have, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I didn't catch a second.
I got, I, no.
I seconded it.
I made the motion, and I think Rick may have.
Yeah, you did.
Uh, motion is to appoint Councilman Mills as our representative of Vector Control District. Uh, Marys?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Fassinelli?
Yes, but I have a question. Sorry. Is it two or four years?
Oh, good question.
Because you can appoint them for two years or four years, and that's what the letter says, so we.
I think it's always been a two typically in the past.
Right, but it says it on here, so I think that we need to specify.
I think it's a good question.
We need to specify what the term is.
I think you have to make it two because Greg's term would even be over, you know, before the four anyways, right?
He doesn't have to be a council member in order to be on Vector Control.
That's right. There's a lot of them that aren't, and you can tell.
Yeah, I'm thinking to stick with two like we've always had it. Two-year term, okay with the maker and the second?
Yeah.
I got nothing.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
I can't vote on it, right?
You can vote on it, yes.
Yes, I'm excited to go back to Vector Control.
All right, wonderful. On Thursday. All right, item 18, next is time to hear individual council member informational items, starting with, um. Let's mix it up tonight and start with Deborah in the middle.
Oh, outstanding.
We've always done the outer end, so let's change it.
Well, that's great. On December 4th, I went to Senator Mark Wyland's district event. He's down in the San Diego area primarily, but I just wanted to point it out because he is running to represent us on the Board of Equalization. Michelle Steele is termed out, so I thought that that was kind of interesting. He's got a great staff down there, and he's easy to talk with. And he's served very honorably while he's been a state senator. I went that night to a free speech event. It was free speech versus hate speech. It was a panel that was put on at the North Orange County Community College District Boardroom. Boy, oh, boy, they put a lot of money into those community college districts. I couldn't believe it. It was, it was truly the Taj Mahal. The event was hosted by Supervisor Sean Nelson. I think you probably all received an invitation. And really, what it was, what it was coming out of, what had happened at the city of Anaheim, where someone was at the lecturn and made some statements that folks thought were hate, hate speech, and what is the appropriate way for a mayor to handle shutting things down while still allowing for the free speech rights of those who come to comment during public comment session? And I think what's going to happen and what we'll be seeing is the AOC OC and others will be corroborating on putting together a playbook, if you will, for the mayors to have at their disposal so that they can learn more about how to deal with those sorts of things. It was kind of an interesting discussion. Little misleading in its promotion, but I understood when I got there what it was about. It could happen to anyone. I did want to talk a little bit about the wonderful fraud prevention event that happened on December 5th. It was a great event. I was really disappointed that we only had 14 attendees. That Sergeant Scott Spalding did a great job, but the one tip that I thought was one of the best, he talked a little bit about credit card skimmers on gas station pumps. And we actually had two residents that were in the audience that had this happen to them. And the one great tip that he provided that I think everybody can pay attention to is they have never found a credit card skimmer on pumps that are closer to the actual, you know, gas station building. They're always the ones that are the furthest away. And so if you're out getting gas and you're traveling, the best thing to do is try to avoid using the pumps that are furthest from the building to help, you know, prevent you becoming a victim of fraud and credit card skimming. And I also wanted to thank Shredwise and the Metcalfs, who are residents here who own Shredwise. Even though we only had 14 attendees at the actual fraud prevention briefing, there were a lot of residents who showed up to take advantage of the free shredding. And it was just really nice of them to do that, and they gave a nice little presentation at the end. And I wanted to thank Jared for making sure that that whole thing came together. And also Lieutenant Gunsel. It was an outstanding presentation. It's too bad more people didn't have a chance to participate in it. Obviously, we all had a terrific time on the Santa tour and the boat parade. We've already talked about those things. We have such great spirit in our community those two, two days. It just got me in the Christmas spirit. I think it got everybody in the Christmas spirit. And then the next night, on December 9th, I went to Supervisor John Morlock's kickoff. Most people know that he's running to be our next congressional representative for the 45th Congressional District. Those of us who have been watching, what appear to be right now only four candidates certainly would recognize John Morlock and his great work on pension reform, budget. He's a numbers guru. There's no, no two ways about that, so I wanted to share that with you. And since it is the last meeting before Christmas, I do want to wish all my council colleagues and staff and everyone in the City of Villa Park a very Merry Christmas. I pray God's blessing on you, your family, in the year 2014.
Thank you. Greg?
Yes, I too want to echo your comments about the Santa tour. However wet it was, it was a lot of fun. I'm glad we persevered and finished that, that day. We wound up about the same time regardless, even if it's noted that Greg was late. I did, I did have it mixed up, but thankfully, I was getting many phone calls from my colleagues here. Hurry up. And the boat parade was, was, the next day was, was, even though it was a crisp, I thought it was a great atmosphere. I think it went over well. However, I am disappointed at the lack of participation after the parade in the town center. And that's probably something we'll have to look at going forward.
Greg, I want to comment that I didn't call you when you were late.
You did not, no.
But I also.
You were eating doughnuts, I believe.
I also want to tell you that's because I didn't have your phone number.
I've got yours. Uh, the other thing too is that we, we had at Vector Control, the last time, the big topic was different bird diseases and deaths around the county. There's a lot of counts going on with that, especially cowbirds. They're very indicative of what's going on. The cowbirds lay their eggs in other nests. And then they, the, the young of the cowbirds will kill all of the other birds in the nest. So there's, there's a, believe it, anyway, that was the topic last time. Just to let you know, I know you enjoy my reports from Vector Control. But it is a good, it is, it is a, a good group, and things are, are pretty much, it's a very, very good flow. Plus, it's always entertaining to listen to Beth Crom and John Morlock discuss things in that, in those chambers. So then we also have the Villa Park Women's League at Christmas, was this past weekend. They had their Christmas party. I was fortunate enough to attend. It was a very nice event at the Santa Country Club. Uh, we also had the, the CDC. We had two meetings this month, as you can see by the activity in here. And of course, want to thank you all for your comments about all the different topics that we brought up. Uh, and other than that, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, especially you gentlemen for sitting through all of this every, every month we do this. So that is, any questions for me? Anything I didn't cover? Thank you.
Deanna?
For the meetings, school committee meetings, CDC meetings, boat parades, everything was there. We had a foundation meeting, which also was covered in here under the consent calendar, where we added a board member and had current board members renew their terms. We did have Bill Nelson not want to renew his term as treasurer, but he is willing to stay on month to month until we find a new treasurer, so I thank him for that.
He's pretty good.
Um, yeah, so he's been very cooperative. Uh, went to the water board meeting. Nothing new going on over at Serrano Water. And last I heard, before I came in here, Board of Supervisors did not approve the social ordinance at 4 to 1. Um, so we don't have that, so it won't affect the City of Villa Park, which I'm quite happy about. And there will be no bad doggy website. They did actually adopt a vicious animal statement. I'm not sure what the details are, but we won't have to have a website in the City of Villa Park for dogs that bite.
But shouldn't that be really a vicious owner?
Really?
Yes, but that's not how they were doing it, so I just, that came up today since they had the meeting at the same time. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that was there.
I have a question about that. I was under the impression that the social host ordinance only covered unincorporated areas of the county, and that would not include us. Am I correct in that?
Uh, yeah, it's my understanding is it only covered unincorporated areas?
Correct, so that would not be.
It said it.
It does not cover us. We're not unincorporated.
It's funny because I read it both ways. Some said it did, and some specifically went through the cities. So the, I.
There are currently maybe eight or nine cities in the county that have similar ordinances.
But those are cities that, that adopted them on their own.
On their own.
What the county was doing and only has jurisdiction over in this instance would be for unincorporated areas. And there are big pockets in the third district, no doubt, but we're, we're actually incorporated since 1962.
Yes, we are.
51 years.
Almost.
That's it?
Thank you, Deanna. Rick?
50 and 11 months.
Well, the.
Third.
Fire Authority Union contracts are all coming to fruition next year. And I think the board is fairly active comparatively speaking, is my impression, although I haven't been around the prior years, and is anxious to get something done that actually makes some sense. For our part, I'll just share with you that Villa Park will be aggressively pushing forward to try and create a fire authority that is reasonable and sustainable so that when a year is over, we can say, we made it through the year, the bills are paid, we're flush, we get on to the next year, everything's covered, we're not going to be looking at more deficits, and we have a balanced budget annually, we don't have to go back and readjust it every year for pensions, et cetera. That's going to be the big push coming out of here. So we'll see what happens. Cross your fingers. I don't, I don't know what will happen, but if it does happen, and I think in the long run, it'll be better for everybody involved and have a stable organization that doesn't have to worry whether they're going to go into Chapter 9 every year. So that's it for mine.
Good point. All right, on November 20th, there was a Orange County Sanitation Board of Directors meeting. And the, the interesting thing of that night was we've been working on adopting a new purchasing ordinance for the organization. So it got completely scrubbed, and we adopted it that evening. That was a big item there. Uh, on 11/23, Mayor Pro Tim Barnett and I attended an OCFA Reserve graduation. And it was very, very well done. Both of us are very proud of the reserves who volunteer their time to help OCFA. The program is way reduced from what it used to be, but there is still plenty of folks that do serve in the OCFA and the Reserve ranks, and we definitely support them, and we're happy to go to that. And other than that, of course, the Santa Parade and Boat Parade and the other little events, just great, great, great times. And, and I also want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. I can't believe it's next week. It's just, it's crazy. So that concludes the informational reports for tonight. So the next item, item 19, is our final item of business tonight. It is to elect a new mayor and a Mayor Pro Tim. I declare the offices vacant, and we'll turn it over to the city clerk. Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Following historical procedures laid out for you in the staff report, we will conduct the election for the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, both offices are vacant, and I will accept nominations for mayor.
I would like to go ahead and nominate Mayor Pro Tim Barnett to be the mayor of this fine city for 2015.
Or 2014?
Next year. Oh, yeah, right.
Skip the year.
Skip the year. Next year.
Good job.
All right.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote just to confirm it. Uh, motion is to approve council member Rick Barnett as mayor for 2014. Councilman Fassinelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnett?
Can I go last?
Councilmember Reese?
Yes.
Councilmember Polly?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnett?
Yes.
401. He's our mayor for 2014.
Congratulations, sir. Okay, all right. Mayor take over. I'm going to turn it over to you right here.
All right, well, thank you for what I hope or perceive was a vote of confidence there. And rest assured, I will do everything I can to do this as efficiently and pleasantly as humanly possible and will be totally open for everybody. Beyond that, pleasure to be in that position. This is incredible city. As the, as the, as the ASYMCA staff at Camp Pendleton advised me on multiple occasions, we have an extremely unique city. And, you know, I've tried to do that marine thing and get them to spread it, and no matter what level I talk to from the general staff down, they all look at me and laugh and pat me on the back and say, you just don't understand yet, do you? That's a very unique city you're in. And while I hope others would do the same thing, and they're not, they're not that accurate, we do really have a great city. This is just an incredible, really neat place to live, best place I've been. It's just a really tight-together city, and I intend to carry on and facilitate that as best I can. So with that, I guess I have to do the Mayor Pro Tim deal, so what do I do? I guess.
You're welcome to open up nominations or make one of your own.
Yeah. Uh, all right, I guess I would, I would probably nominate Deanna Fassinelli. I think she's done a pretty good job, took a lot of time, and maybe that'll help her with her election.